Welcome, everybody, to the Township of Georgian Bay for our Committee of the Whole Meeting of Tuesday, May 6, 2025. And I like to call this meeting to order at 1:01. And as is my habit, because I've already given a full land acknowledgement statement this morning, I will not be repeating it, but I think it's extremely important that we do always remember that we're on lands that were occupied by Indigenous people for many, many thousands of years. Our current neighbours include Potawatomi Nation and Muskeer Point, the Mohawk Nation and Watah, and many people of Indigenous descent that are amongst us in our communities. Council, any declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest on any of the items on the agenda? And seeing all heads shaking, no, I will then move to, we have no open forum, I believe, or do we?
We do, but it's after. It's not yet.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right. I'm out of order. We're going to go straight to our deputation, and that's investment under the prudent investment standard one investment. And I'm presuming that one of you is Jennifer Hess, and one of you is either Jason or Keith.
Jason Hagan.
Jason Hagan. Well, Mr. Hagan, Ms. Hess, welcome. And is it Mr. Taylor is on board online?
He is online.
Okay, turning it over to the three of you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, CAO. Thank you, Treasurer, for having us today. We're here to, happy to help folks with their investment learning journey. It's part of what we do at One Investment. So just by way of introductions, I'm Jason Hagan. I'm Program Manager at LAS. With me is Jennifer Hess. She's the Investment Manager at MF Way and One Investment. And online is Keith Taylor. Unfortunately, Keith had another commitment today, but Keith is our Chief Investment Officer. So if any questions come up, they get too deep in the details, he's here to support us. But you have the pleasure of seeing us today. So thanks for having us. This session today was a request of the CAO and the mayor as a follow-up to the Roma Conference back in January, where we did a session on prudent investment for municipalities. And the question was, could we come and speak to Georgian Bay Council? You guys already leveraged the One Investment Program, but just to talk about the next opportunity available there. So this is a bit of a lengthier presentation than you might normally have in a deputation, but we're here to kind of just paint the picture of what prudent investment is, how the municipal act works, the opportunity, and then just answer any questions, as I said, to help with the learning journey for council.
We've already gone through a number of lengthy presentations this morning. So I'll encourage you to make it as succinct as you can.
Absolutely. It worked before. So next slide, please. Oh, there, now it works. All right. So what is One Investment? It is a not-for-profit. We're dedicated to serving the investment needs of Ontario municipalities and municipal boards and commissions. So that is our entire business, Ontario municipalities and related entities. We've been doing work with the One Funds or the One Investment Products since 1993. One Investment is operated by two organisations, LAS, which is the business arm of the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and Chums Financing Corporation, which is a part of the Municipal Finance Officers Association. So effectively, it's a not-for-profit run by two not-for-profits. We have two options, legal list and prudent investment. The township already leverages our legal list options. We're here to talk a bit about prudent investment. And not to belabor the oversight piece, but we have adequate oversight in the organisation and happy to chat with any council member offline if that's of interest. But right now, we manage about $4.7 billion for about 175 Ontario municipalities and other boards and commissions. So we talked about the legal list, and so the investment powers for municipalities are governed by the municipal act. The municipal act says, by default, you're on the left side of this slide. You're a legal list investor. So you have to follow the rules that are laid out in Ontario Regulation 43897. The regulation tells you what you can invest in. It does not tell you what you can, it basically says, if it's not listed, you cannot invest in it. So the investments are very conservative. They're all Canadian, which is very nationalistic, but is not the most diversified pot. They work. They're predictable. They're very boring, and they don't take a lot of risk. All the things we want with municipal money. The challenge is, though, municipalities have longer-term financial needs, and they go far beyond what a regulation reviewed every five to 10 years could keep up with. So in 2019, the province created the ability for a municipality to declare themselves a prudent investor. Prudent investor is Section 418.1 of the Act. It's optional, and a municipality has to move into this section by way of a bylaw. So you have to declare yourself a prudent investor, and we'll talk about the details of that later on. But what that enables you to do is put in place an investment policy, an investment plan, and then have access to far broader investment markets than just Canadian products. So currently, the township leverages One Investment for, two of our legalist products are high-interest savings accounts, which is effectively a bank account with a bit of a juiced-up interest rate, because we're able to carry the balances of about $700, $800 million in bank deposits. And you leverage the other end of our spectrum, the Canadian equity portfolio, which again is for, it's always fully liquid, but it's intended for money that is a horizon of five years or longer, because Canadian equity markets can be a little volatile in the short term, but they do perform well over the longer term. For example, our 10-year return is close to 9% annualised, regardless of the noise in between. We offer two bond products as well, and these are the products we've offered for many, many years. So taking a step ahead from that, legal list is on the left side. As I said, all Canadian. What is prudent investment? It is the idea that a prudent investor would purchase things in a prudent manner after giving thought and consideration to it. So it's effectively opening up your universe to the world. And the purpose for that is diversification, risk management, things of that sort. So again, it's really a next step in a municipal investment journey for longer-term funds. The municipal act is pretty clear about what being a prudent investor entails. And I note these parts, not everybody has to read through them, but just to say that the Act is specific about some of the obligations under prudent investment. It says that a municipality must exercise care, skill, diligence, and judgment that a prudent investor would. They have a duty to obtain advice, professional supports. They have to consider investment planning criteria, economic considerations, things of that sort. So you have to have a thoughtful investment policy and a plan that works with it. You have to diversify to an extent that's appropriate for the economy. And most importantly, is the last one, is that the municipality must be at arms-length for those investments. It must invest the long-term money, as defined, via an investment board or a joint investment board. So it's saying you can become a more sophisticated investor, but the municipality has to set the rules, set the guardrails, put their nose into the investments, and pull their hands out of them, and then allow an investment board to manage them. And we'll speak about all that. So your municipality has done very well investing in the legal list. Canadian equity markets have done well in recent years. This year is a bit of a different creature, but you've done well on the whole. So why would you consider something different? Frankly, it's diversification. It is a big part of this. It's taking the day-to-day management of the investments off of the treasurer's desk and placing them in the hands of a professional investment board is another step. Right now, we can support the treasurer with any questions about investments, time to get in, time to get out, where would we put new money. But the discretion is ultimately at the treasurer's hand on the legalist side. On the prudent investment side, once the municipality has set the investment policy and the plans created, the board follows the plan. So it's a far more hands-off approach for the municipality once you've become a prudent investor. Access to subject matter expertise. We work with RBC PHNN Institutional as our investment manager, access to many funds. So with lots of expertise, our Chief Investment Officer as well. And frankly, moving to prudent investment, as I said, because it's hands-off for the municipality after the policy and the plan are set, it helps depoliticise the investment portfolio as well. It lets the market tell the board, and the board tell the investments what to do. So I talked about long-term money. Long-term money is a term that's actually in the Act. It's called MNRI, or Money Not Required Immediately. And the premise here is, sorry, it's not defined, but it's laid out. My apologies. MNRI is defined in your council-approved investment policy. So that is basically the line in the sand you will put down that says, what money is for investment under prudent investment, and what money should remain under the care and control of our treasurer under the legal list. So staff and council might agree that the line in the sand is two years or three years. So any money shorter than three years in your horizon with your capital plan, your operating budget, et cetera, stays in the treasurer's hands, stays in the care and control, bank accounts, operating accounts, et cetera. Anything longer than that, let's call it a $5 million pot of funds that's earmarked for 10 years down the road, you would declare either a pot of money as money not required immediately, or a time threshold. And then anything beyond that would be the money that you would provide over to your investment board or joint investment board for professional investment. So again, anything outside of the definition of MNRI remains under the care and control of the treasurer. I mentioned this earlier. Under prudent investment, it can't be just a back-of-the-mind thought. It has to be a deliberate decision. The municipal act requires that a municipality, through council, pass a bylaw to give effect to prudent investment, and that the bylaw become effective as of a prudent effective date. So what is the date at which we're going to start investing differently? And that's where the municipality says, the treasurer says, there's the $5 million hypothetically, here it is to the investment board, and now my hands are off it. And the premise is, is that this declaration is made, you need to find an investment board to do this work, and One Investment offers an investment board, which I'll speak about. We also have all of the subject matter expertise and the education materials to help you get there. Council report templates, investment policy statements will help with the investment plan, will help with the annual review that's required under the Act. So really, once you've taken the step and become a prudent investor, we'll help you with every step along the way from thereafter. And we currently do that for a number of municipalities, three of which are in the Muskoka District. So that would be the District of Muskoka, the Town of Huntsville, and the Town of Bracebridge. Oh, hold on, did I go too far? So pathway to prudent, there's three options here. I'll walk through them all, not suggesting they're all relevant for the municipality. On the left is the most complex and costly. On the right, it gets easier, but still involves some work. Option one is for the municipality to set up their own investment board. Toronto has done this. Ottawa has done this, and the City of Barry have done this. But you must have $100 million of money not required immediately to do that. So for many municipalities, that takes that option off the table. Option two is you can band together to create a joint investment board. So this is a board under the municipal act. So it acts with open meetings, the same rules that council will follow with their own meetings. But collectively, that joint investment board has to meet the rule identified in option one, $100 million. Option three, you can join an existing joint investment board. One investment has the one joint investment board. There is no minimum required to enter, because we've already satisfied the threshold. We currently invest $2.25 billion on the prudent investment side. So the municipality can ask, can effectively say, we want to be a prudent investor. They can create an investment policy with us. They can create an investment plan with us. That would be considered by our joint investment board for enrollment, and once accepted, you would be a prudent investor. So in our mind, it's a turnkey solution to a very complicated issue. In terms of governance, as I said, I've kind of touched on a bunch of this, and just being cognizant of time, the municipality, the work is at the front end. You have to have the will to become a prudent investor, create, or, sorry, we would work with staff, and then council would adopt and maintain its investment policy, which is effectively the guardrails on the investments. How much do we want to have in equity? How far do we want to go this way? And we'll help you along that. And then after that, council is in a much easier place. The law requires that you review the investment policy annually. It doesn't require you change it. It requires that you review it with staff. And that you, then staff would monitor performance and compliance of the joint investment board. The joint investment board on the other side would help you develop and then adopt and maintain the investment plan, monitor performance ongoing, create any updates to the plans as money comes available that the municipality wishes to put in or take out as the time is. And then we engage agents to manage the assets. So we have, we work with PHNN Institutional, and we have access to 30-plus funds that we can help in the investment plan. So as I said, we act through that joint investment board for 15 municipalities currently. And as I said, three of those are in the Muskoka District. This is the last slide you have to hear from me, and then my colleague Jen will take over. So thank you for your patience. This is just a list of the municipalities. And the key point here is, the left column is founding municipalities. These are the six municipalities, as I said, three of which are from the district that created our joint investment board with us. They're the founders. They helped us get over that $100 million hurdle to start doing the work we do. And the municipalities on the right side, the other nine, are the ones that have joined us since the creation in the spring of 2020. I'll pass it over to Jen.
Thank you. So Jason has spoken a lot about the investment policy, and I just want to summarise it up, that really, the investment policy that is approved by council under prudent investment is really your control, right? It is what's going to steer the ship under prudent investor. The investment plan that would be approved by the One Joint Investment Board has to be compliant with your investment policy. And through, every time you renew it each year or review it each year, it brings forward an updated investment plan to the One Jib for approval to ensure that we remain compliant. It also ensures that we are, your investment plan meets your investment horizon needs, your liquidity needs, and everything else that could come with it. But there are, investment policy in the Act, there are a few critical components that must be included. As Jason's mentioned, it's your municipal definition of money not required immediately. To date, in the province, all 18 municipalities have used time as the delineating factor in that definition, but it doesn't have to be. It can be whatever you determine it to be. It could be a concrete figure. It could be a source of funds. It could be a specific reserve. It could be as broad or as narrow as you deem it to be. And then, as Jason said, anything that falls outside of that definition remains under legal list. And the investment policy could also include any other requirements that council considers to be in the interest of the municipality. It really puts you in the driver's seat to control what your investment plan looks like. And under the Act, annually, you must review this policy. So Jason mentioned that we had partnered with PHNN Institutional, who is part of RBC Global Asset Management. This was done through a competitive RFV back in 2023, and it really opened up and expanded our options under prudent investor for our municipalities. We grew from having five available funds that would make up your investment plan to over 30 funds. This allows better customisation, better diversification, and opens up different investment products, such as alternatives, which we didn't have before. Just to dispel a few of the prudent investor myths that we often hear, the first one is that my municipality is too small. Our current prudent investor municipality is the municipality of Needing up by Thunder Bay. They have a population of under 2,000. And our largest, well, the largest in the province right now is the City of Toronto, but the largest under One Joint Investment Board is the Regional Municipality of Durham. You know, and as Jason mentioned, although the pathway to prudent may be different for the Ontario municipalities, it really is an option that is viable for everyone. The second myth we hear is we don't have enough money. I would argue that for small municipalities, investing is a very valuable tool in a municipal treasurer's toolkit. It may not be the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, but it's a really valuable way to help offset and raise non-tax revenue for the municipality. And also, on a per capita basis, if you think about how much a 1% tax rate increase is worth in your municipality, for small municipalities, investing might give you a better bang for your buck compared to a larger municipality. So we have a bit of a municipal story to tell, just to put this in, it's just in some general context. And we recognise that every municipality in this province is different, but there are some similarities, right? We all have the same gains, we all have the same issues. You've got asset management plans. You don't know where the hell you're going to, sorry, or how you're going to pay for them, sorry. You may be dealing with growth. You've got weather-related issues that pop up. There's always pressures on your budget, and it just leaves some treasures with very sleepless nights. So the story we have today is this municipality that decided to go prudent last year. It's a rural township in eastern Ontario, 50% seasonal, 50% permanent. Most of the assessment base is residential. It's a huge municipality, over 1,000 square kilometres with over 100 lakes. And the one that gets a chuckle from the urban people in the province is it's 75 kilometres from the closest urban shopping centre, and there's no Tim Hortons in town. Basically, the treasurer describes it as the sidewalks roll up at seven o'clock at night. And if you didn't buy it before then, good luck, you're waiting until the next day. Most importantly, they also have one main highway connecting the municipality north and south. This highway used to be a provincial responsibility that was downloaded to them. So right now, they're trying to figure out, from an asset management standpoint, how they are going to pay for this. Their municipality with a very small employment base, work for the town, you know, they're spending over 50% of their budget on just roads, and their asset management plan is telling them they should be spending $5 million a year, and it's $5 million that they don't have, especially when they're trying to figure out how to pay for this main highway that's going to need to be replaced in the distant future. So they asked us to do a bit of modelling. And they wanted to know if we've got, if, you know, if they were able to put aside a certain amount of money each year, and they had initial lump sum to invest in prudent, how much would that money theoretically grow? And although we cannot predict the future, we look historically for a theoretical model. So we looked through our legalist annual returns over the 10-year period, and you can see they go up and down based on the economy. And we looked at a prudent investor portfolio, and we looked at a bank return. So if you basically just stashed it in the bank. A high-interest savings account is tied to prime, so the two rates there indicate prime at its highest during the year and prime at its lowest during the year. The benefit to going, one of the benefits to going to prudent is theoretically, you're able to get a better diversified portfolio when you go beyond the Canadian economy. So theoretically, you're able to decrease the risk. So the modelling we did for them assumed 40% of their funds going to equity under legalist and only 30% under prudent. So as you can see, annualised over the 10 years, theoretically, it would show about a half a percent better, or more income coming from prudent investor than if they had just kept the money in legalist. So for them, they had initial contribution of about $2.5 million. They thought that they could build up to $250,000 ongoing annually. So at the end of 10 years, if, they would essentially have stashed about $4.75 million in the piggy bank, but that would still not be enough for them to do the road. So they looked, and so the results are in. So over a 10-year period, you could expect under prudent that that contribution would bring in approximately $2.3 million of non-tax revenue, under legalist approximately just over $2. And with, they just kept it in a high-interest savings account, anywhere from $600,000 to $1 million of non-tax revenue. Graphing this, you could see the difference. You know, their 1%, tax rate increase is sitting at about $125,000. So over the 10-year period, they could expect about 2.67, sorry, 267,000 of additional non-tax revenue coming from prudent investment. And the treasurer recognises that investing will not pay completely for his asset management plan, but council recognises also that it's a source that they can utilise to help offset the future tax-based pressures. They're probably going to have to take debt out to pay for this road, but again, they're going to be able to lower the amount of debt that they're going to have to take out.
So just before Jen finishes up, the one point I would add to that visual is that we painted a very, very conservative picture of prudent investment, and our investment partner has said that the return could be potentially far higher than that. But we never want to oversell the idea. They're suggesting it could be, you know, 5.7% or higher. So really, your delta becomes almost a percent over a longer-term period of time. But...
We'd rather under-promise and over-deliver. So if council and staff decide to move forward with prudent investment, really, the next steps are that staff would develop an investment policy. And with One Investment Support, council would approve that investment policy and pass a prudent investor bylaw that authorises staff to enter into an agreement with the One Joint Investment Board on a chosen effective date. The treasurer would then go back and take that definition and try to figure out what that results for dollar-wise, how they would apply the definition, and then would complete our municipal client questionnaire. It's a similar document than Know Your Client for those of you that have retirement savings through an investor. It's an annual requirement that we have to form. It just gives us a bit more knowledge on your investment horizons, what you're possibly looking for, your pressures. And so we just get a bit more information on your current circumstances, because we recognise year after year, your budget changes, your pressures can change, you know, your story changes. It's continually evolving. And then One Investment would work with the treasurer to develop a compliant investment plan. And then One Jib would consider and approve the municipality as a participating municipality and your investment plan. And once the One Jib agreement is signed and MNRI is transferred over, the funds would be then invested as per your approved investment plan. So as my colleague mentioned, there is some advanced work, but we're here to partner with your treasurer and staff to get them through the process. And we're here every step of the way. So it's, we do view this as a strong partnership. We do recognise, and we fully believe that prudent investment is the way for Ontario municipalities to move towards, along their investment journey, because we do see the benefits of it. And I believe the three municipalities that are in your district that have been with us for the last five years would attest that they do find prudent investment a very benefit to their communities. Thank you. Is there any questions? We'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Council, for your information, you know, this being Committee of the Whole, is that we may, the motion that has been drafted in front of me is basically asking staff to report on the options and the impact to us if we think after our discussion today, we want to dig further into it. And I'll make one comment, and then I'll turn it over to our treasurer, if she wants to make any comments, and then to council. And that is, given my role with the Finance Committee at District, been dealing with this for the full five years, if not longer. I can't remember when the whole thing came forward. Our now CAO, then treasurer, Julie Stephens, was very involved in setting up this One Jib system. And I can tell you, as a consequence of that, we get excessive reporting from this organisation every quarter. That was just my little editorial. Okay, Ms. Radigan, any comments before I see if any council hands go up? And if we could stop sharing the screen, it would also be helpful.
Thank you, Mayor Coates, through you, to members of council. I have been working with LAS for quite some time throughout various municipalities. And when I was with the City of Arilia, I believe I tried to bring on board prudent investors' status as well. We've been involved in investing through the HISA Fund, as well as the equity market as well. The equity market did very well for 2024. We did have a significant increase in investment income, but that was a very rare and odd year. And as you'll see, based on our Q1 reporting, it's not, the gains are not there right now. So I do believe for long-term investment, this is a good strategy, and I think it's important to consider it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Council, Jervis?
Thank you, through the mayor. Thank you for the report. What does LAS stand for?
LAS stands for Local Authority Services. It's the name of municipal government services in the UK.
Thank you. And how do you determine the composition of the Joint Investment Board?
So it's, the Joint Investment Board is a board of... So, so it, it's um, the Joint Investment Board is, is a board of, of one, one investment and it is uh, it is nine investment professionals or investment slash finance professionals and three municipal treasurer representatives. So under the uh, the municipal act, twenty-five percent of a board can be the, be the treasurer. So um, because we have three treasurers, we have to have a board of twelve.
And just uh, a point supplemental to that, then we would join another municipality, I presume, with the district. Is that correct? That's the proposal rather?
Through you, Mayor Coates here to Counselor Jarvis, we would join the existing L A S board that is made up of founders of, which include the district Huntsville and Bracebridge. So it's an existing board.
And who from uh, here would be a member? Would you be a member of that board then, representing this municipality or who would represent our municipality?
So, so uh, so under the act, um, it actually says that, as my colleague mentioned, that twenty-five percent of the board can be treasurers. Um, it specifically says that there can be no other staff and no other elected profession, members. So the board is just restricted to twenty-five percent treasurers. Um, we do have three municipal representative, municipal treasurers that sit on the board that are also participating municipalities. Um, and as a, a spot opens up or as a term expires, then it goes out to um, all the treasurers for all the participating municipalities. And if there's interest, then it goes through the process of a nominating committee and then we fill that seat that way. So there is a turnover, but uh, right on the board at the moment, there is uh, Stephen Reddy from the town of Bracebridge. Um, there's Nancy Taylor from the region of Durham. And uh, the treasurer from Innisville just uh, left the town. So we currently have a vacancy and we're in the process of filling that municipal spot. We anticipate it would be filled by, at our next meeting.
Supplemental, if it's all right with mayor. Um. If, if we come on board with this uh, joint investment board, what kind of influence or do we have any influence with this board or any input or do we just do what they say?
Uh, through you, um, Mayor Coates here to Counselor Jarvis, I don't believe uh, the municipality would have influence. I believe it's based on market and based on investment expertise at, at a higher level than, than I believe what I can offer.
But I think, I think it's important to note, A, the investment board is supposed to be independent of elected officials. But B, we get to say, you know, and, and as you call it, the know your investor type thing. We get to say what our parameters are within which that board can decide for us. That helps. Thank you.
Uh, additionally, whenever your investment plan is coming up for review, we have had treasurers that have uh, spoken to them, to the board, right, to provide their municipal perspective. Whenever there might be unique circumstances to consider when translating um, your investment policy into your investment plan, things to be aware of. So there, there is always dialogue going back and forth. The One Joint Investment Board does not act unilaterally. It's always a partnership with the municipality through one investment. Um, and so we always, we always strive to make sure that municipality is happy with their investment plan. Um, and we, we always ensure that it's fully compliant with your investment policy.
Yeah. And just, just to add to that, it's uh, it's important to remember, to recognize that when the municipality adopts prudent investment and at every annual review, your investment policy sets the guardrails. So it tells us how far we can go in certain directions. And that is what guides the investment plan. And then the Jib is effectively sober, sober deliberation about that investment plan to say, is this prudent? Is this plan delivering a reasonable amount of risk versus return? Are we following the policy? Are we following the guidelines given to us? And if yes, then we approve it for implementation. And then the maintenance comes um, from our chief investment officer Keith Taylor. And then our investment partners for the day-to-day piece and the excessive reporting as, as the mayor recognized at the region. Until we get to a fundamental change where the treasurer says, we need money that we didn't anticipate. We have money we didn't anticipate or we're at our next annual review.
Counselor Cooper.
Thank you, mayor. Um, and just uh, I don't have any specific questions about how you invest, but I have a couple of uh, questions about who you are, um, just to cover a little different ground. How are you, how do you qualify as a not-for-profit, given that you're sort of like a brokerage in a sense?
So um, so what investment is a not-for-profit owned by two not-for-profits? Uh, under a not-for-profit, you can make revenue, but it has to go back into the objects of the corporation. Which for us, uh, we, we, we have a saying that we, uh, we have a terrible business model in the sense that we'll go ahead and offer investment services advice and help municipal with their investment plans, even if they choose to buy bank G I Cs. Doesn't matter to us because of our, our relationship on the L A S side to A M O. And on the chum side to M F O A, we really just want to enhance municipal capacity related to investments and municipal finance. So that's where we try to put our efforts. So that goes into training and education, the webinars we develop. And then the funds we offer at, at far less than, than retail rates. And then we just, it, that all helps fund the joint investment board, our governance functions and all that.
Yeah. So on all the boards, whether it's the Municipal Finance Officers Association, um, our board is made up of municipal treasurers, uh, the L A S board and the A M O board um, are also made up of municipal represented, municipal. Thank you. I always trip over that word for the last couple of weeks. Um, and then you look at the one, one investment board itself, which really is the business arm of the One Joint Investment Board. Uh, we have nine uh, municipalities and one industry expert that sit on that board. So municipalities have their hands all over this. Um, so when, and we all know that, you know, if a treasurer is going to find a cheaper deal out there, they're going to try to find the cheapest deal out there to save municipal cash. So our fees are kept exceptionally low to basically just to cover costs uh, wherever possible.
So I have a couple of other quick questions. Secondly, um, you noted a relationship you have with R B C. So you basically, they are your broker, in other words, in a sense. Is that correct?
So they, um, R B C P H, so R B C is Global Asset Management Company. Owens, P H and N Phillips Hager North Institutional. That is our investment management partner. So they're our outsourced chief investment officer, is the term.
And that's basically, or was D S R, R B C, correct?
I'm, I'm not certain of the.
Dominion Securities.
I, I'm not certain about the history.
Okay, anyway, it's a.
It's an, if you, if I may, it's an affiliated entity. Uh, R B C acquired P H and N, oh, many a year ago. So it is, uh, it's been amalgamated into R B C's uh, asset management arm.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just a couple of other quick questions. Um, your fees.
So there is a P H and institutional does have fees on their investment products. We have an investment management agreement with them that's based on the cumulative assets under management for all municipalities. So um, you're exceptionally low rates. And as it continues to grow, rates are actually going to go down on their end. Um, one investment does have a governance fee uh, for the One Jib that covers our costs. But again, it's an exceptionally low fee and it's based on your assets under management with us. So, um, and it's a tiered structure.
But what is the fee?
So it ranges anywhere from uh, twenty-five basis points for the first ten million and it goes, it goes down from there.
Down from point two five.
Yeah, it goes down from point two five for our one investment governance fee.
How many employees do you have?
On the one investment side, five.
Sorry?
Five.
Five employees. Thank you. That's the end of my group.
Don't, don't you wish your personal investments had point two five percent rate?
Well, that'd be lovely. I, I just wanted to know who you are and what you are.
So I would say the, the point two five is the one investment governance fee. So that covers the operating cost for uh, the one investment business services as well as the running cost for the One Joint Investment Board. So it provides this level of governance to you at an exceptionally low cost compared to what it would cost to run your own investment board if you're able to.
I also like that you have five employees and you manage whatever it was, billions of dollars, so.
There, there are also, uh, because we're a partnership, um, there is also input coming from the L A S side as well as the Municipal Finance Officers Association. So it is, it is, it is very hands-on deck. It's not a, a unique entity that's, it's always, it's, we're in partnership all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Predko.
Thank you. And through you, Chair, um, just a quick, quick question mainly to our, our treasurer. And just wanting to know really more detail in terms of how far down this path have you been considering? Have you looked at the, our annual rate of returns compared to the historical rate of returns at one investments? And um, you know, what, what's your path? And, and I know you might bring some of that to uh, the report, your financial report update. But what's your path to uh, consider this further for council? Is, or is that based on a recommendation or an output from uh, council this afternoon?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coates here through you to Counselor Predko. Uh, great question. Um, I believe in the past, uh, township of Georgian Bay didn't really have an investment strategy. And I believe even ten, fifteen years ago, um, municipal treasurers were not really focused on investment. Um, and since L A S uh, brought on HISA and then um, the Canadian Equity Markets, I believe it's easier for treasurers such as myself to, to invest. Um, I don't unfortunately know enough about the market compared to what we are currently doing. Um, my understanding is the long-term prudent investor status is is a more refined and, and possibly um, a better, better strategy in terms of return on investment. The equity market will fluctuate. Um, and, and, and I believe, I'm hoping that either Jen or Jason may have, have some history in terms of our prior um, last two years of investment versus what uh, prudent investor has offered.
Uh, yeah, so I can answer that. And then in terms of the P I opportunity, I'll defer to, to Keith Taylor. But our high-interest savings accounts have been coming down in rates as bank prime has been coming down. It's currently at three point two five. Um, the equity markets, again, a, as, as the treasurer noted, there has been some short-term volatility. But the ten-year return is just shy of nine percent net of fees. But on the P I opportunity, I'll, I'll defer to our chief investment officer who's joining us virtually.
Yes, thank you very much, Jason. Um, I guess maybe uh, it's, it's hard to make that, that comparison because obviously we don't know what your circumstances are and how we would have invested, what would have been appropriate. So maybe I, I, I just referred to uh, someone we all know, uh, Muskoka. And Muskoka has been invested with one investment since uh, well, in the prudent investment offering since uh, July twenty twenty. And up to the beginning of uh, of March, their um, their returns have been about six percent uh, on an annualized basis. Um, so that, that's a diversified portfolio that does not have a, a great deal of, of equity within it. And you know, I'm not knowing your circumstances, whether the similar allocation would be appropriate. Um, but at least gives you something uh, to, to, to put a handle on. Um, had you invested in, in bonds alone, you wouldn't have been able to achieve that. Um, and I would not want to refer to your, your own experience in, in the Canadian equity portfolio. Cause that's a kind of a little bit, a little bit biased. But that last, that at least gives you something uh, to put a handle on. Uh, returns in this range should be, well, it returns under a prudent investor should be uh, should give you at least the similar amount of returns you can get under legalist. But hopefully, uh, probably uh, with less volatility because of the international exposure. Anyway, six percent is probably uh, the one number I'd put forward uh, for Muskoka that, that would give you a handle on this.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the question back to the treasurer is, do you think we've been earning a six percent return on the uh, high rate interest that we've probably been investing in the past?
If, if I can just uh, tack on to what Mr. Taylor said before we pass it on to your treasurer. Uh, Mr. Taylor was citing, as he mentioned, a return from Muskoka. And that is based on a lot of factors that go into an investment plan, right? Um, to compare really a single product to a diversified portfolio is, is a bit of an apples and oranges comparison. Uh, we would never recommend that a municipality be in a single product. Uh, we, to, we strive to make investing as boring for municipalities as possible. We want you to be able to weather the market's ups and the downs. So we would always promote and our chief investment officer would always promote having a diversified portfolio in both fixed income and equity. And with prudent investment, then you get to also go and go beyond the Canadian borders, right? Then you get the global perspective. So when the Canadian economy is not doing so well, somewhere else in the world is probably doing really well. So you're, you're, we're not striving to take you on a roller coaster. We're striving to have you on a nice Sunday drive through the country where there's nice gentle hills. Um, so when something happens in your municipality and you do need to liquidate your funds, that they are there for you. Um, that, that is, that is really our, our goal in, in the sense. So when he spoke about a six percent return, it was a Muskoka's, uh, Muskoka has a mix of both bond and equity. Um, and over the last five years, given COVID, they've weathered COVID and things like that. There's been, uh, the markets have had a few crazy things happening too.
Um, thank you through you, Mayor Coates here to Counselor Predgo, just to answer your original question. If we've been receiving that type of return on our HISA and, and equity market, I would say, yes, it's been more, if not obviously comparable, but the Canadian equity market did very well in twenty twenty-four. So it's really hard to compare a six percent to what we did see a return on investment on. Um, the equity market, we, we saw over one million dollars in, in interest in twenty twenty-four. And that's almost unheard of. Um, and so that's where, when, when I do come forward with the first quarter report, you'll see it has taken a, a downturn and we're not going to see the same level of, of interest coming from that in twenty twenty-five.
Okay. And then the last follow-up question. Um, when looking at the mix of investments that goes into the, the, in a portfolio, is that set by the L A S board or does the individual municipality kind of pick and choose their own individual composition of uh, bonds and, and equities?
So, so that the mix would be part of the investment plan, that's a part of the One Joint Investment Board. Um, right, but it, it does feed in, it feeds in uh, that determination of what the best mix is comes from um, what sits in your investment policy for your risk tolerance, your investment horizons, your need for liquidity. The other factors that you're, you're definitely, that you're putting in your investment policy. Then they take that and they try to determine based on your outcome, uh, what the most appropriate mix would be. Logically, as you see with your own retirement, as it moves closer to that retirement date, your, your investment manager is going to be transitioning you out of equity and into more fixed income. So really the mix depends, like municipalities are not necessarily putting funds in that are just ten plus. Essentially those that have been with us for five years, some of those ten-plus years are now more sitting in the more three to five-year bracket. So that may bump up their fixed income, right, and lower their equity because they're going to need their funds sooner rather than later. So it really, again, we revisit it every year, your investment plan gets updated every year. And it goes with your capital forecast, your municipalities' needs. So it really, it really can vary. Um, most municipalities that we have are sitting around the forty percent, Keith, I believe is right. Forty, about forty percent equity, but that's based on their investment horizon mix.
Okay. To, to Jennifer's point, if I may, yes, uh, most of our clients are, are at the forty percent. But it's uh, what we do, again, it, it's, this is the, the whole point of the, the Joint Investment Board. So uh, we, you have a professional management advising on the appropriate allocation for your communication, uh, your community. Um, and that's based on what information you give us. So we're, we're devising an investment plan that, that reflects your circumstances. And no two uh, municipal clients is going to be the same. The way we, for example, manage Bracebridge monies is, is different than we would Muskoka's. And we've been able to dial up their, the risk for their portfolio accordingly. So in any case, that's set, set um, by, by, in consultation with the treasurer and every, all the information you give us. And we would build that uh, an investment plan that's appropriate based on uh, based on our knowledge and uh, and uh, understanding of your circumstances.
Okay, I was just gonna say, if I could just add to that very briefly as well as, so Keith is our, our chief investment officer. Jen is our investment services manager. They're meeting with every prudent investor municipality ninety days-ish before their annual review. And then they're looping in P H and N Institutional saying, hey, here's what we learned. They gotta build a bridge. No one saw that coming, or they just came into the, a, a pot of gold. No one saw that coming. Now what do we need to do to adapt their plan? And then so it's, it's a, it's a collaboration piece. Um, I, I'm more focused on running the business day-to-day. They're more focused on that investor engagement piece.
Mr. Taylor is a C F A with over thirty years of industry experience. I myself am a C P A, but I come with over fifteen years of municipal experience. I was with the town of Whitby before I joined the Municipal Finance Officers Association. So we, we like to say we're Bay Street, we're, we're Bay Street meets Main Street. Um, we like to, we, we come with an. We like to, we we come with an exceptional knowledge of the municipal sector and their needs. And so you got municipal money is not like pension money and not like retirement money. There's no fixed date because something could drop out of the sky tomorrow. And all of a sudden, you need to build a new building or repair a road. So it's it's what we bring to the table is is a wide breadth of industry and experience to back you up.
Okay, thank you.
And I think if I may, I think it's important to add, because I think it's part of your question. We as as council or as the township will not be directing them to say, get out of Tesla or get into Microsoft. No, that's what the board and that independence, I think it's very important because it's easy to imagine having a council down the road where one or two members have strong affiliations, shall we say, with certain corporations, and we don't want that influence to affect the judgment. All right, well, thank you very much for that. I appreciate all that. I think I just want one question of clarification. The we we at the township were quite successful last year with our investments under the legal list approach. And because that allowed Canadian equities. And I just want the legal list, does it allow a fair flexibility in Canadian equities? Or is it really well defined list of which equities?
So the it the the regulation says that a municipality through an agreement with LAS and CHUMS, so one investment can invest in shares of Canadian corporations is what the law says. We so we are the only channel by which a municipality can directly access equities. We've created the most boring equity portfolio by design. We've we've half weighted the resource sector. So if gold stocks spike, we don't, we don't do quite as well. When resources fall, we don't do quite as bad. We've tried to create our own guardrails to create that performance in in kind of a more predictable state so your treasurer can sleep at night. So we could invest in any Canadian equity. We we choose not to.
Like publicly traded?
Correct.
As opposed to privately?
Any Canadian, Keith, I you can probably add some clarity there.
Yeah, sure. I mean, the the manager that manages this, this mandate for a guardian capital. Yeah, it's an active mandate. It is a growth at a reasonable type, sorry, growth at a reasonable price mandate. Broadly diversified, as Jason I mentioned, it has intentionally very light exposure to the commodity sector because that sector tends to, it's as volatile as the commodity prices. So, yeah, so the to answer your question, there are a few options. There are no other options for equity exposure under the legal list. This is one of the whole points of looking at prudent investor because there are, you know, there's a whole range of of ways to get equity exposure within Canada that that's available with this within this program or international exposure or other types of fixed income exposure or other exposures that you simply can't get under legal list. We are always very reluctant to offer better returns under prudent investor, but the whole point is we have better tools to build a better diversified portfolio. So in our mind, we always try to present it as at least similar returns with with less less risk.
No, and and so in my mind, one of the key differences between prudent investor and the legal list investments is simply the ability to invest outside the Canadian borders because you don't have that with the legal list.
That is part of it. It's also the constituents that are within there. Under the legal list, you are are in fixed income. Yes, it's only Canada, but it's a subset of the Canadian fixed income market. Triple B bonds or lower credit quality are not on the list. High yield bonds are not on the list. And there's all sorts of interesting ways that that we can add value that unfortunately we can't under the legal list. And that's one of the reasons we promote it very strongly.
All right, well, thank you very much. Not seen more hands. I have moved by Councilor Bocek, sent by Councilor Cooper. Be it resolved, the council directs staff to report on the prudent investor standard and the options and impact for the township of Georgian Bay. All those in favor? All right, we've given you a little bit more homework to do, I'm afraid, Ms. Radigan. That is carried. And you're we're still you're still busy today because we're going to now talk procurement policy update, please. Oh, sorry. Clerk's always paying attention. Thank you very much. We appreciate all the information and I'm sure you're going to hear from our treasurer shortly.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And sorry, we have some open forum individuals. All right, so let's do open forum.
I believe there are members in the public who maybe should speak at open forum, but I also have one individual online who has raised their hand already.
Okay, so let's move the one on the online over then. My apologies for trying to skip over that.
So Mr. Rickman is online now.
Mr. Rickman. Oh, you're muted, sir.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Now we can.
Perfect. Good afternoon, your worship. Good afternoon, councillors. My name is Mark Rickman and I am the manager of policy at the Ontario Federation of Anglers and Hunters here in Peterborough. I'm here today regarding the draft discharge of firearms by law. And I'd like to thank Karina King for reaching out to the OFAH to solicit early feedback on the first draft of the bylaw. We appreciate that some of our feedback is reflected in the draft that appears before council today or will appear before council later in this meeting. The OFAH has been involved in more than 100 discussions with municipalities like yours on the development of bylaws that risk impacting heritage activities like hunting and shooting. We generally don't take a strong position on the need to develop a bylaw. That decision rests with the residents of the municipality and the elected officials. We simply provide feedback from the perspective of hunters and shooters and discuss the full suite of options available to a municipality, up to and including rescinding discharge bylaws, which is actually the path that some municipalities have chosen in recent years. We have great success finding balance between addressing the concerns of residents and respecting and protecting hunting and shooting. Key voices in this conversation are those of the people that are going to be directly impacted, the the hunters and the recreational shooters. Municipalities face the most resistance when they fail to acknowledge the importance of these activities and fail to respect the people involved in them. So my message today is simple, or my request today is simple. I'm here to simply recommend that council give this issue the attention it deserves and host a public open house to permit all residents of the municipality to provide their feedback and to even consider creating an online survey to solicit feedback from from residents, as many other municipalities have done as they've worked through this discharge process. That's it. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak and I look forward to our continued involvement in in the discussions with your municipality.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Rickman, for your your presentation. And also you're you're working with our bylaw department. That's really appreciated. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Anyone here also? Nobody's jumping forwards. None of you are expecting to be part of the open forum, or you were? You'd have to come and sit down and either be formal about it and or or not, because for the benefit of those that aren't in the in the room. If you like.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. My name is Gork Price, out of 155 Bonneville Road. I have a very flat area and a major problem with the geese. The geese are a major problem in this, in in any area where there's lakes and stuff. There's some of us have have been out in the lake this this year and we found 36 nests in Little Lake alone. That means there's 72 geese that are on nests, plus all the adolescent birds that don't nest at the at this point in time in their lives. So there's like probably 100 geese in Little Lake itself without the young. The geese do an enormous amount of damage to the water, to our properties, to 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 personal life, to to pets. Their 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 poop is absolutely terrible and it's destroying the water. There's people that are getting sick from it. This bird flu is a major concern throughout throughout the world with with these geese are carrying this flu. I've had a license to shoot the geese from Canada Wildlife. And and so I've been shooting geese. The bylaw reads that I'm not allowed to discharge a firearm within 75 meters of my property. I have had written permission from everybody either side of me and the next ones as well that I'm no problems with the way I'm doing it. I've had the M and R in to see me. I've had the OPP in to see me and everybody's been okay with the way I've been shooting them. I am a hunter. I belong to the Ontario Hunter Hunters Federation all my life. I know what a gun will do. And you don't shoot, you don't shoot geese with a high powered rifle. You shoot them with a shotgun. And anyways, with the bylaw as it is right now, it's 75 meters. It's it's a situation with the township and I'm not allowed to shoot. So when when I've seen this bylaw coming up that possibly changing it, just wanted to say my few words and hopefully everybody is in agreement and and we get a bit of control over over some of these geese. I mean, we're not, we're not shooting millions of these things or anything like that. It's just, you know, you go down to the park here and it's a beautiful little park. You spend thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars on it. And the kids can't walk in it because of the goose stuff. Anyways.
Thank you very much.
Basically said my piece.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? All right, that ends the open forum forum portion of our meeting. Councilor Cooper.
I'm not going into open forum, but I just wanted to to say to this gentleman, there are other options. That's all. If I could give him a little feedback. I had to, I just wanted to tell you that I've had a many years ago, a neighbor that had something like 5,000 nests of gulls on his island. And he was able to get rid of them, but it was a real job. He got permission from M and RF to oil the eggs. It was one of the things that they did. They also had a noise cannon which got rid of the birds as well. So also shaking the eggs sometimes will kill the eggs. There's there's things you can do. I just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
All right. We're going to now go change topics completely, but we lost a treasurer. Oh, we gained a treasurer. Thank goodness, because now, just for complete contrast, we're going to go to procurement policy before we get into the draft discharge. So the sooner we can spend all that money we're earning with our investments, the sooner we can talk about talking about shooting.
Thank you, Mayor Coates here. I apologize, I was just having a chat with with the two individuals that presented. So thank you, Mayor Coates here and through you to members of council. Section 271 of the Municipal Act requires that every municipality adopt and maintain related policies to the procurement of goods and services. So in other words, having a formal procurement policy is a legislative requirement. The policy must also comply with the provisions of the act itself, as well as with any relevant trade treaties. The overarching goal is to ensure that our procurement practices are carried out in a way that is open, fair and transparent. Staff provided an update to the procurement policy in a draft form during the last meeting of COW, which was held on April 8, 2025. Staff received written comments from some members of council and I have provided them within my report and also updated the procurement policy based on some of those comments. The policy provides the CAO and each department head delegated authority to expend township funds, but only through council's approval of budgets or specific council resolutions. The policy explicitly identifies that no staff or other person is authorized to expend funds for the specific purchase of goods or services until a budget or resolution is available. The updated procurement policy ensures accountability at all levels of the procurement process by clarifying and defining roles, responsibilities and authorization requirements. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
All right, thank you very much. And to just so you know where we're steering with this, any comments we want to make is appropriate, obviously. And then we, the the resolution would basically ask our our treasurer to bring forth a version of the procurement policy at our June meeting of council for potential approval. With that, I'm looking for hands if anybody would like to discuss the procurement policy at this point. Councilor Cooper.
And I'll be very brief. I just wanted to ask, it strikes me that there's sort of a slight difference or not a slight, but a fairly significant difference in procurement between the acquisition of assets versus services. And specifically when it pertains to, for example, consulting advice or legal advice, that kind of thing. But you don't really make any distinction here about that. And I, but I maybe I missed it, but could you respond to that? Because I think in particular, if it has to do with, I'll just finish here. If it has to do with an acquisition of some equipment of some sort or another, you're probably not going to need council to give you a huge amount of advice. I guess there's some of us like Councilor Bocek that have more experience with equipment than many of us. But but generally, when it comes to consulting advice or legal advice, I think it would be who our CAO and staff to consult with council. And I realize you're saying council has to give approval, but I'm talking about consulting from the perspective of sourcing who to source. Have you got any thoughts on that? Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mayor Coates here to Councilor Cooper. No, that's a very good point. There is a list of exclusions from the procurement policy and legal is is one of them, simply because it is, it is difficult to proceed with a competitive process in terms of the requirements of what we require for legal. For consulting services, I think it really depends in terms of what type of consulting services are we looking at? Is it, is it only a specific industry and could it be sole sourced? And that's a possibility where we could come to council. But if it does meet a the competitive bid requirements, we would always recommend going out for a competitive process to ensure we are getting the best doll, the best dollar for for what we are, what we are receiving.
I just follow up briefly and just to say, that's good to hear. And all I would suggest is that as it pertains to both legal and consulting, I understand that that you want to perhaps go out to market. But who we go to market for? In other words, you can just send out an RFP, but another way to go at it is to maybe ask the councillors if they know of anybody that could do good work for us. And the reason I suggest that is this, I referenced Markham this morning. This isn't Markham. It's a pretty unique township and we, it wouldn't hurt to source people that would have a bit of a read on how this township operates. We're rural, we're waterfront, there's a whole bunch of things that you don't find in that many municipalities in Ontario. So that's the only reason I raise this issue. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mayor Coates here to Councilor Cooper. The the policy itself does state that council remains at an arm's length. And I think there's, there are some great examples out there where I believe last month Marilyn Clark did identify some issues with that that came about in the Collingwood Inquiry. And part of that was politics and procurement kind of blending. And so the idea is to try to reduce the amount of risk for the township as well as council members. And hence why we don't try to go to council to to get a recommendation. The idea is you want to ensure that we, that council remains at at an arm's length to ensure it is a fair and transparent process.
If I may just respond, please, to that and simply, I wasn't suggesting If I may just respond, please, to that and simply, I wasn't suggesting the council have play any role in terms of the selection. What I was saying is that it, when it comes to this township and the uniqueness, there are some people that we might happen to be aware of that should be put into the bin of consideration and not have any role in picking the necessarily who it is, but a role in sourcing. And so I don't see how there's a conflict there. And that's really what I'm driving at is please come to us and we'd be happy to try and help out. Not influence and make you hire one person only. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coates here, through you to Councilor Cooper, I do appreciate that. So I apologize if I misunderstood your question, but absolutely, council, in terms of RFX documents, we can do invitational where we do invite more than three vendors. And if there are vendors out there that council feel are appropriate, then absolutely, that would definitely form part of our selection process.
Councilor Graziano.
Thank you, and through your worship, Director Radigan, I sent comments, I believe, or I made comments in the previous council or COW, rather, I'm not sure if you had a chance to re review them or revisit them. I know you did ask for submissions. I thought I had sent them, but they were in to send box, so I do apologize. If you'd like to see them again, I'll be happy to hit send this time, I promise. But with that said, there's a couple of concerns with regards to the revisions here. Specifically, if I can, the policy distinguishes between emergency purchases and the declaration of a state of emergency. And I think there needs to be a stronger definition on the two. I I want to mitigate, I guess loopholes of confusion whereby perhaps the application isn't really applied based on the intent. So I'm wondering if we can consider that. I think that that's likely going to be a good consideration. The other, the other issue is that the prequalified suppliers list, I think, I'm really, it leaves a bad taste in my mouth because I think it prohibits competition. Having a, and I understand it's for efficiency purposes, perhaps you go to market, you want, you have the list, send it out to them, blast it to them. But just from my perspective, having a prequalified suppliers list, I think, just it's just not good governance. I think that we should go to RFP, release it, let whoever bids bids, it's my personal opinion. And I I think that the prequalified suppliers list kind of removes that. So and then the other thing is, I'd like to see in the next iteration when it comes back to council, some way to regularly review this, this policy in council for at least perhaps maybe the first couple of years to see how it's flowing. You know, are we experiencing any any roadblocks, are there any ball necks? Is this operating as it was intended to be? How does council feel? You know, are the approved amounts too high, too low, you know, could we do better? So if there's a way to review this at least once or twice in the next couple of years to determine how it's effectively rolling out, that'd be great as well. So my thoughts, thank you.
Council Hazleton.
You sound surprised. Director Radigan, question, how do people get on the prequalified supplier list?
Thank you, through you, Mayor Coates here, to Councilor Hazel Hazelton. Just hoping everyone can hear me. The it it would form part of a RFP. We would go out for a competitive procurement process to identify a prequalified list. We so let's, for a good example, it could be an electrician or a roofer, perhaps. We would go out, provide an RFP. And in the RFP, there would be areas where we would identify performance and a regular review and in terms of how or and the number of years that we would prequalify them for. Ideally, the qualified individuals would then get on a list. And we would rotate through them based on our requirements and based on when we need them and their prescribed rates. And usually you would do a prequalified list for about a three year, three year process. And then you would go out and prequalify again. The the reason why this is efficient is it is in terms of where we are, our location. There there have been times where our facilities department has, let's say, needed to, needed something immediately, but it was always, okay, well, if it's over twenty five thousand, we have to go back to council for approval. So it it it's been delaying the process in certain areas rather than just being able to call up an electrician or a roofer for some repairs and maintenance. So these are more your small items that we're looking at, not anything major, no major consultants, it's just your minor day to day maintenance.
Thank you for that. And and with that, I will say that I am strongly supportive of your prequalified supplier list. I maybe even want to take it one step further. There may be vendors who want to get on the list that you have experience with that you should never put on the list. And perhaps having that list on the side could be helpful as well. Anyways, thank you for that.
Yeah, where's the no go paragraph in this policy? Any other comments at this point? I have, I for one, really appreciate all the work you've put into this. And I think, you know, it's always like so many other things, a tough balance between practical, efficient methods and yet yet making sure that we don't cross any boundaries we shouldn't cross. We don't waste money or utilize a resource that is inappropriate, if I can put it that way. So I appreciate all the work you've done with this, thank you. I have moved by Councilor Hazelton, seconded by Councilor Graziano, that the report from the Director of Finance regarding the procurement policy update be received. And that council approved the proposed procurement policy set out in Appendix A of this report at the next scheduled meeting of council on June second, twenty twenty five, and repeal bylaw twenty thirteen dash seventy four. In other words, dozens, a dozen years ago. All those in favor? And that is carried, thank you very much. And now, let's go shooting. Ms. King.
Okay, we do have a presentation, Josh is gonna get us it up for us. Okay, so I have a script here, I'm gonna read from. All right, so thank you, Mayor and council. We created a presentation here to hopefully summarize the bylaw and provide some further information as we go through it to break it down. Now I have to go next slide, I don't mind. Okay, so just an overview of what we're gonna talk about today. So in this presentation, staff will provide an overview of key prohibitions outlined in the bylaw, exemptions that permit firearm discharge in specific circumstances, and common misconceptions and clarifications. Below this, so on June third, twenty twenty four, council unanimously passed a resolution C twenty twenty four dash one ninety nine, which reads as follows. So this first section is be it resolved that staff review our discharge bylaw to ensure residents' safety is protected and discharge of firearms cannot damage private property and prepare, someone's talking to me, sorry, prepare a report with recommendations for any measures that increase these protections. So that's why we're here today, is this, you know, draft bylaws in front of us to discuss. The second resolution is that council directs staff to work with the Ministry of Natural Resources to request their assistance in ensuring crown lands are protected and provided safe access for all of our community members. So this M and R request within the resolution is still very much ongoing. We've had numerous complaints regarding unsafe discharge on crown land even since these initial complaints started this item with council. Staff, our CAO, the mayor have been actively engaged with M and R, OPP, and Hydro One, as well as concerned residents in three locations throughout the township. Ultimately, municipalities cannot regulate or restrict discharge on crown land, nor do staff have any intent to. As mentioned in the report, M and R and OPP are the best ones to address this ongoing concerns that are happening in our area. Staff will continue to work toward this goal of ensuring that crown lands are safe for residents to enjoy. And this, this third part of the resolution was that staff asked OPP to come and present to council about the tools that they could address these issues with. OPP did do a delegation in October of twenty twenty four, which they were able to answer some questions that OPP had at the time. OPP and Bracebridge are also actively working with us on these issues to help M and R and staff navigate these problems that we're seeing in the township. Okay, so our current bylaw, as Mr. Price indicated, there, it's from ninety one, so it's older than I am. So it's in effect, it's currently in effect right now, and it has two main prohibitions, which are as follows. So the discharge of firearms be permitted within seventy five meters of a dwelling unit in the township. So that's any dwelling unit, including your own. It's not, there's no consent side of it, which Mr. Price illustrated there. Then there's discharge, a firearm should be permitted or prohibited within five hundred feet or hundred and fifty two meters of any landfill sites in the township. So this bylaw is quite dated, it's a one pager, it does not have the appropriate tools to address firearm discharge violations and concerns within the community. Well, over the last year, staff, myself, have been working and reviewed a lot of bylaws from a lot of different places. Some of them are listed on this slide here. I've also, as you've heard from Mark Rickman, consulted with himself and many other hunters, even in their staff here, I've been kind of leaning on them because besides my husband, I don't have much expertise in this subject. So I talked to conservation officers who reviewed this bylaw, senior wildlife expert and firearms expert, our insurance, and the township prosecutor gave the final go over before we are bringing this to review today. So we're into the prohibitions of this bylaw. There are six prohibitions and many exemptions that accompany them or directly speak to them. So this first prohibition basically says that no person shall discharge a firearm or bow and accept in accordance with this bylaw. It's a catchall prohibition section that just makes sure that individuals are not violating the bylaw. The second prohibition is that no one shall discharge a firearm or bow on any property without consent of the owner. And most hunters that I've spoken to, and including Mark Rickman, this is already common practice. So there's hunters who are accessing lands that's of private property or not their own. This obviously wouldn't apply to federal provincial land as long as that that use is permitted in those areas. This last one is basically ensuring that owners who are allowing people to discharge on their property do their best to make sure that they're do, these people who are discharging are discharging within the rights of the bylaw. So it's just that protection there. Okay, so no person shall discharge or cause to be discharged a firearm or bow within a prohibited area. So underneath that, it's a defined term. So underneath prohibited area, there's educational, property, park, public center, and public trail, all of which are defined in the bylaw. So an educational property is what you assume it is likely, a school, school grounds, college, private school, all listed in the bylaw. A park means a public park that it's owned or operated from the township, so not to be confused with conservation areas or parks that are within the township that are not owned or managed by ourselves. Public center, cemetery, place of worship, community center, landfill, hospital, all places that no one is probably going to be hunting. A public trail, so this means a township owned and operated public trail, AKA our Violet Drive, Tawney Harbor Road, public trail. This does not mean snowmobile trails on private property, I wanted to make that clear. That was a discussion that Mr. Rickman and myself had because in November, when there's no snow and if people have permission from those property owners, that's absolutely an appropriate place to discharge a firearm. So I, as I said earlier, as most hunters likely in this room can attest, these areas that are prohibited, prohibited areas are not somewhere we would hunt. And that's the resounding information I've got back from the community as I've spoke to them through this time. So the second area that would be prohibited is an, is a lot less than three acres in size. So there is an exemption that goes with this that I'll get into later in the presentation and why we chose this route instead of urban centers. So we go on and then obviously on or across any township property would also be prohibited. So for anyone who's spatially unaware, like myself, we put this graphic up to show that this is three point three four acres. So this is the building we are sitting in right now. So from the front of this building to the back of our works yard over toward the south shop and CSP, that's three point three four acres. So it's not that large of a space, but I think that's a reasonable place for for this, and that's where we've gotten here. Okay, so then prohibitions continued here, so no person shall discharge firearm within a hundred meters of these locations, so prohibited area. Again, that's our educational, park, public trail, all defined. And then any dwelling unit, which I have is occupied dwelling unit, the bylaw currently reads occupied unit, which I would suggest after some more consultation, as this is an ever evolving process, that we change this to any building. Then that way the people don't have to decide whether they're occupied or not, they should just have that consent from that owner if they want to be closer than a hundred meters from the dwelling or building. And then again, there's a bow within fifty meters of the prohibited area and same thing with the dwelling unless they have the consent of the owner. Okay, so the exemption, so this exemption speaks to the minimum lot size. We staff have drafted this and helped with our prosecutor. This is specifically made for our township, no other bylaw that I've seen and I've reviewed, a lot of them have had this because I, like we say all the time, our township is unique. We have those big pieces of crown in small areas. So basically, this is that you can, you can cause to be discharged a firearm on a lot less or less than in three acres in size if you have but crown land. Again, I'm gonna play with this wording a little bit to ensure that it means like the combined acreage of your smaller sized acreage and a big piece of crown that that could be appropriate to be discharged within. And then B is this speaks to private property, so that would be with written consent. So this would speak to Mr. Price's concerns, if he had written consent from his property or his neighboring properties, then that could be something that they could address. Which that's not, the current bylaw as it stands, that's not an option to have consent with that seventy five meter setback from a dwelling. Okay, so we're just putting some examples to show what I was speaking about before. So you can see in this picture, there's one point three five acres of private property, so this person could not shoot. But because they backed to crown and we have that exemption in there and they're backing to it, they could then discharge on their property. So there's that little bit of leeway there that wouldn't be there in other bylaws. And then again, here's an example provided, that's two point one two acres of private, if that's surrounded by eighteen of private. So as long as they had that written consent from the eighteen acre owner, then that would be okay under the bylaw. Exemptions. Okay, so the following are exemptions, we've just summarized them here for the slide because there's a lot of legalese that comes with it. So basically, part of normal farming practices that are destroying animals that are in the act of killing or destroying a livestock or property within this bylaw, there's also a section that speaks to any provincial or federal legislation prevails. So there are acts that allow people, the Fish and Wildlife Act, if there's a bear, you know, destroying your chicken coop, that isn't okay. You you would be exempt from this discharge bylaw because it's federal or provincial statutes allowing you to do so. So a trapper licensed with the M and R to dispatch animals that they're trapping, a registered and regulated gun club under the Firearms Act, discharge of bow, airgun, paintball gun, all within an indoor facility. That's obviously not something we have, a lot of people on, or a lot of things on this list is not something we currently have in our infrastructure here in the township. But it doesn't mean that they won't come over time, so I want this bylaw to stand the test of time as the community changes. Discharging of bows at competitions, educational and recreational sanctioned events, property owned and managed and controlled by provincial or federal agencies where firearms are expressly permitted. So as I've mentioned before, that's not something that we're going to interfere with. A facility operated by municipal federal police, again, we don't have that, but in case we do in the future, any device used for signalifying, notifying distress, so think of players, there you go, thank you. Firing blank ammunition, which does not discharge a projectile, that was also not clear in our previous bylaw, which caused issues when it came to hazing or deterring geese. Persons authorized under the Canadian Aviation Regulations to kill wildlife that interfere with an airport. So that's the exemptions that kind of come with this. Okay, so during the drafting of this proposed bylaw, our staff read a lot of other bylaws. Majority of these bylaws have urban centers. Wait, hang on, I'm skipping aside. Staff wanted to address some concerns that they've observed through social media and through surrounding and speaking with our community members that have come in and spoke to me or called me over the last week and and a bit. So the concern I can hear is that the township doesn't have the power to create this bylaw, it's its federal and provincial responsibility. So as we can all agree, provincial and federal legislation, it all speaks to guns, that's more their wheelhouse than ours. But in section one nineteen of the municipal act, it does allow for municipalities to create discharge bylaws for the purpose of public safety. So we can do that. The next concern I've heard is that the township should not get involved with these discharge concerns. Currently, we have a discharge bylaw, so we are involved, whether we would like to be or not, and it's quite old. So this is something that staff has, or so council has asked staff to update and review, and that's why we're here. The last concern I've heard is that the township is restricting discharge of firearms on private land. This is not, this is not true. The bylaw prohibits discharging prohibited areas, undersized lots, and on township properties as well as close to dwellings. There are lots of exemptions which I've outlined that would allow for individuals to still discharge this firearm safely within the township. I've had quite a few people have called me this week saying they have forty acres and they're concerned that I'm gonna stop their discharge. And that's not accurate, and it's, these are the things that are in the bylaw that we've crafted to make sure it's, you know, safe for everybody, that gives the flexibility that hopefully is required. Okay, so this is a common question. So during the drafting of this proposed bylaw, staff read a lot of other bylaws, a majority of these bylaws have their urban center, as seen in the photo here, where discharge is not permitted. So for example, Bracebridge, they have an urban center, and their urban center is just that, it's an urban center with very tight housing, and then with very tight housing and then it sprawls out and then that's where they prohibited it. Where staff didn't feel this worked for us and our communities. So that's why we went with the three acre situation. So the photo in the slide is the urban center of Honey Harbor. And as you can see and are likely aware, there are a few pieces of property within this urban center that should be not treated the same, should not be treated the same as those small parcels in the same area. So I know people who actively hunt in the Baxter Loop, there's a hundred acre parcel there. There's no reason they can't safely do that. But if we did the urban centers, they wouldn't be allowed to. So we're on the flip side. I'm sure we can all think of a couple of islands that are pretty populated along some main channels that are on smaller lots that I think should be captured in this bylaw or spoken to at least. Okay, so for the enforcement, so within the last nine years that I've been here, I've received approximately four legitimate concerns that have been dealt with by the bylaw department. Of these four concerns could all be addressed through that ninety-one dash one oh five bylaw. No fines were issued and the education of the bylaw corrected these concerns and I haven't heard anything back about them. Two of them were about hunting and two of them were about target practice slash sliding in rifles and they weren't aware that they were upsetting neighbors or too close to it, too close to a dwelling. So as also piece of it is that staff every September to December, we receive a lot of calls from good hunters who are coming into our areas to either hunt or sit in their rifles ahead of time. And they always ask our setbacks. So it is important to me to have these things here so we can speak to them with more, you know, substance behind it. So we can address those issues if they become, become one. So this new draft bylaw adds enforcement provisions under our AMP's policy or bylaw, and it also allows us to take it through the P O A if necessary. Worked with Mark Rickman on the fines to make sure that they were a deterrent, but not going to hurt those hunters that may not have been aware they crossed the line and that the bylaws were different. So I'm suggesting that the first offense be three hundred, second six, and third nine hundred. So before we take any questions, I would like to add that since the agenda was posted, I've spoken with and met with several community members. And I know from speaking with councillor Bocheck that he's received a lot of feedback about the lack of consultation on this bylaw and Mark Rickman mentioned it as well. This has been a project on the resolution tracker in my work plan for some time. And monthly updates have been provided as I've been working through these things and learning all the things that I have been with the people who've been helping me through it. I would like to suggest that the bylaw be brought back for further discussion and consideration in August, committee of the whole. This will allow staff to hold, the opportunity to hold a public meeting and put out some more public education and information about the bylaw, proposed bylaw. And listen to concerns that the public may have about this bylaw and specifically about the bylaw in particular and about the lever of government, level of governance of municipal governance on firing and bow discharge. So I see that's a common concern in what I'm speaking to as well. Just this morning, I spoke with a member of the Delta Waterfowl who had some great questions and actually brought some points to my attention and some edits. So now we're in chat with him to make sure that this is ongoing. Bylaws are working documents that always need updating. This is no by means, no means a final draft. But staff felt it was worthy to bring it for review at this point and get some public feedback and committee's thoughts before continuing. So that's all my spiel. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, thank you very much for all the, the work that you've put into this and I'm sure many greatly appreciate it. And I think that well, we all, I don't, I don't want to speak for council because they're about to speak for themselves, but I think we all recognize that, you know, people in their dwellings deserve to be, to live in their dwelling safely. I also think we need to comment that the great majority of hunters and firearm owners are responsible. And I, and I don't think this bylaw says otherwise. And I think that's, that's important. I mean, with all due respect, most of this stuff should be. That's, I, I am certain that the rules that you've written here are basically followed by the hunters, whether they're written there or not. So and I think that's a good thing. That with that, I'm going to turn it over to council and I'm going to start with councillor Graziano, followed by councillor Bocheck, please.
Your worship, I think councillor Bocheck was ahead of me. So councillor Bocheck, would you?
I don't understand why the system does this to me, but call you councillor Bocheck.
Do you want to, councillor Bocheck first? Okay, after you, please.
Thank you councillor Graziano. And thank you bylaw for bringing back us this report. It's well needed and we need to hear your stance on it. Originally, you were tasked by this council to, to figure out how we were going to come to a resolution to people from outside of our township, coming into our township and firing fully automatic rifles, illegal guns, handguns, et cetera, on crown land, on hydro land and other lands that we had no restriction over. Many, many of our residents do not believe that this bylaw is going to do anything to stop this action. The proposed bylaw is unnecessary as all Canadians must comply with federal and provincial laws. To present, to possess a handgun or a firearm of any kind, you must attend firearm safety courses, complete a written test as well as a practical test, and then apply for a license. The R C M P, the O P P, the M N R F, and a number of other different government-controlled agencies have the right to remove your license and remove your firearms at any time. If this sounds familiar to you, it probably should because it's the exact same process that we have to go through to obtain a driver's license. Would it be fair to create a bylaw for the tens of thousands of cars that drive through Georgian Bay Township with a new set of bylaws that they know nothing about? Like hunters and shooters, we already have a set of guidelines and lies and laws that we follow. I could go on and on about this bylaw, but it doesn't serve any purpose outside of this is adding one more layer of governance and governor, government bureaucracy and more hoops to jump through. I have asked the head of our bylaw department as well as our fire chief if they have any concerns about gathering public information through an evening hours at a large venue such as the Baxter Ward Community Center. They agreed that this is a good idea and would be, and they would make themselves available to explain the updates to the bylaw and agree to a question and answer period. To date, there has been no communications with our residents. As a matter of fact, I found out about this discharge law the minute I opened my agenda less than a week ago. So how would anybody from the public know about this? I asked today that we do not approve this bylaw to move forward to council. Excuse me while I page down. Failing this, I would request that the council approve a staff-directed meeting in detail. I believe that our staff agrees that there has been very little public input, except for those who saw most of my social media posts through social media channels. Let's do the right thing and listen to our residents. They voted for us to represent them in their wants and wishes, and this bylaw is outside of what they were wishing for. I ask council and staff to agree to a deferral until a public meeting has been completed and we've been given time to digest all of the public's concerns. Thank you.
I'm imagining that Ms. King must have knew that was coming when she'd already volunteered.
And further to that, I spent a lot of hours with our bylaw department and our fire chief explaining the public concerns be, because through my social media channels, I've received over four hundred and fifty negative responses to this bylaw, and that's not including the thirty-three shares and all the other shares that have gone through social media. So I think we can see that the general public in the township of Georgian Bay is not willing to support this. But an open process in an evening would be the best way because people can't show up here Tuesday at noon to discuss this. And if they did, this room, the corridor and the parking lot would be full of people. So I'm really appreciative of what you brought forward here and I highly suggest this public meeting happen.
Thank you councillor Graziano.
Thank you. And through your worship, perhaps some rhetorical questions, but I'm going to throw them out there anyways. With regards to this bylaw, how does this hinder or stop people from out of town coming to our municipality and firing firearms?
Through your chair, I, it depends on where they're shooting, I think is the best way to answer that. As I mentioned earlier, those crown pieces, that's really for M N R to decide what happens on that property. And through the O P P, if they're unsafe or illegal firearms, that's all O P P's realm. And same with M N R, there's things that they can do there. But one thing that I did think of while going through this, we are concerned about these people coming up and shooting on crown land. What if they buy a property here? What if they rent an Airbnb here and are doing the same type of behavior that are not technically illegal? Because the guns they're using are safe, they're licensed, all those things. But the community, community that surrounds these houses or wherever they may be are now concerned and we have no tools to address it. So that would be my thought process in that it depends on where they are. There's nothing that we can write here that will stop them on crown, but that's the conversations that we're having with the M N R to encourage that. You know, governance in that space where these things are not, we don't feel safe because our community members are telling them, telling us it's not safe there.
So what I, what I just heard in that, if I may, and I appreciate your response, is that we have no jurisdiction on anything but our own municipal lands. And someone can still come up here, bring their firearms, discharge their firearms on lands that are not within our jurisdiction. So essentially, this bylaw here is to prohibit someone from firing strictly on our properties. But the, the bigger question was, how do we stop them? And I heard we don't. And I think that's the net, net here is that there's no stopping someone from discharging a firearm. Rather, it's just issuing a ticket. The other issue that I have is yourselves, are you armed? It's rhetorical question. No, the answer is no. We're putting you in harm's way if you go and address a person who is discharging firearms in an area that perhaps you're investigating. And that's a big concern that I have. You're not O P P, you're not the police, you're not R S C M P, you're not anyone that is able to defend themselves if in the event that a person were to turn a firearm your way. And I think that that is incredibly wrong for our municipality to expect you to put your lives in front of our AMP tickets. So with that said, I'm going to echo councillor Bocheck and say that I think that this is, and frankly speaking, what really perplexes me is the airgun, the pellet gun. I mean, we're effectively banning pellet guns now too, based on, on this. Excluding, we can fire a pellet gun within a secure indoor facility, as we can a firearm. So the concern is not if the ricochet fires back and kills me, as long as it's in within a secured building, rather perhaps a loose projectile that is, is, is running errant somewhere out, out in the open bush with trees and a whole bunch of other cover that might get in its way. I, I just, I'm a little perplexed at some of the stuff that's in here. Net, net, I support councillor Bocheck's recommendation. I think that this is over the zealous at best and, and I don't support this in any way, shape or form. And for the record, I'm also a licensed firearm owner with my R pal and as well as my pal. And, and I take it personal that my municipality suggests that I don't know right from wrong on how to discharge a firearm and where to discharge a firearm. I think that that's a concern to me, that after all the training that I've gone through, after, you know, the courses that I've had to take and the laws that have been enacted by our government in order to secure proper firearm discharges that now I'm facing an AMP's ticket. So, thank you.
Through, just in response, just for clarity, whenever there's a discharge complaint, that's something we're going with O P P. That's not something that we, that's why I'm a bylaw officer, not a police officer, because I don't want to have to deal with that. That would be something we bring O P P with us and we do in tandem. They can use this just as under as an officer. So that, just for clarity, that's not something that we're going to, you know, address directly without assistance, like we do on some other calls for unrelated to guns. We always use the O P P as their keep the beast or to assist us in these goals. We work with the other agencies to address those situations.
Fair enough, and I can appreciate that. So I'm going to throw out a hypothetical. Let's say for all intensive purposes, I discharge a firearm on my property and you arrive with the O P P and I tell the O P P to get a search warrant. And the O P P decides that they're not going to go to court to get a search warrant to inspect my firearm. Are you going to return back to my property and try to issue me an AMP's ticket or are you going to do it right there on the spot?
When it comes to search warrants and firearms, that would be a question for the O P P, not myself. If we had evidence, then that would be something we'd have to investigate and decide the best course of action. If that meant a tissue, ticket was issued, that's what we would do. I want to try and stick with the bylaw today so that we're not going too deep into hypotheticals because it's two forty-five. But those questions are all valid and I'd like to explore them more as we said with the public in the town meeting, right?
So you would require the O P P to attend in order to issue a bylaw ticket is what I'm understanding in this particular situation. So this is not about prohibiting improper firearm use, rather it's, it's about issuing tickets.
Absolutely not. It's not about issuing tickets. These are tools that we can use if required, when required. Like I said, I've been here for nine years. I've had four complaints. I've never issued a ticket or a charge or summons because that bylaws are outdated. I have to summon some to court. That's not something I have done, nor I intend to, because as we can all agree that ninety-nine point nine percent of hunters or gun users just like yourself are following the legislation that's there and they're training. This is there in case we have these situations and this was asked, I was asked to bring this forward to explain it and update it, bring it back from thirty-three years to now. So that's what I've done.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fritko.
Thank you. And through your worship, a couple of questions for our bylaw department. And I just wanted to comment on, I, I think the feedback I've received from the residents that I've heard from have concurred with it. The bylaws not addressing the issue of non-residents discharging firearms. So I, I think if you are able to have open houses, public forums to, to try to get feedback and, and educate people on, on what you're trying to accomplish. I think that would be helpful because I, I think there's still a lot of people trying to understand the difference between the original bylaw, which was very bare bones, I think two paragraphs. And today's, which has a lot of different pieces to it that are, are, I think, a little bit overwhelming. And one of the pieces that in, in listening to Mr. Price and other people that I've been contacted by is really around the geese issue and having a migratory game hunting bird license to to, to shoot geese to try to manage the population, which I know is not our, our primary want for how we do that, but that is a legal means. And the concern again is trying to get permission from all the other property owners in the area to, to be able to do that in a safe manner. And the provision right now in the bylaw is to get written permission from everybody, which I think is it might be onerous and a difficult thing to track. So as you're looking forward through this and hearing feedback, if there's some way to make this a little bit maybe more standard or less onerous on the, the people to understand how to maintain that permission, that would be probably helpful. Because I think that is, is a primary concern of people that have a license, have a gun and don't know how to go about getting that three point four acres or whatever space that they need of permission. I would also note that with the inclusion of crown land adjacent to your property, I think, you know, in my area in particular, and many of our inland lakes, we all back onto crown land. So essentially it's permitted on, on all these properties, the way that we're, we're doing it. So I don't know how to clarify that to people, but that is a big difference from what I think we originally read in the bylaw. I'm not really asking questions. I'm giving you feedback. The last, I guess the one question I do have is, is if Mr. Rickman is still on the line, I know he, in his open forum comments asked for a pause, an opportunity for public input. I'm just wondering if at this juncture, if there's other pieces of suggestions, feedback or, or concerns that he has with this bylaw as currently drafted that can be taken into effect or, and I don't know if we've already had that communicated to the bylaw department, but just very high level, if there's anything else he has to add that could be taken forward.
Sure. Through you, Mayor Cotser. A, I think the, the one main concern I would bring forward is really just to, to echo councillor Graziano's concerns in that, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the regulations, both federal and provincial, that are in place right now that govern the discharge of firearms, either for recreational shooting or for the purposes of hunting are fairly, you know, they're all encompassing. There's a lot of them. It governs almost everything that we do as shooters and hunters. And if we even hypothetically think about some of the contraventions that would be of concern at the municipal level, they are so severe that it would never be a municipal law enforcement officer enforcing them. they are so severe that it would never be a municipal law enforcement officer enforcing them. So that begs the question of whether or not a discharge bylaw is really just repetitive, covering things that are already covered by provincial or federal legislation? And/or if we're, it's more of a paper exercise in that the municipality has something that they can point to when residents bring forward their concerns. But the municipality itself would never actually be in a place to enforce. Because the concerns with respect to dealing with somebody who's in possession of a firearm, for instance. As councillor Graziano said, you know, the more appropriate outlet and response would come from the Minister of Natural Resources, conservation officers, enforcement officers with Canadian Wildlife Service, OPP or municipal police services, depending on where you are in the province. So as I said, the OPH generally doesn't take a strong position as to whether or not a municipality should or should not have a discharge bylaw. If the residents and the elected officials feel that that is the way forward for their municipality, then we will work with them, as we have been, to ensure that it balances the concerns of residents and, you know, respects hunters and shooters. But I will remind folks that for many of the reasons that have already been stated today, some municipalities have recently completely rescinded their discharge bylaws because they realize that there are really no instances in which the municipal law enforcement branch is going to be enforcing any of those provisions. If there are going to be contraventions, they're going to be dealt with by those other enforcement bodies that I previously mentioned. So I, and I, I simply want to remind folks that that is an option on the table rather than having a discharge. And I understand there is an existing discharge bylaw on the books. It is in effect. I agree with Karina that it is, you know, effectively useless at this point. It's so old and it doesn't reflect the current landscape, but there, you know, the municipality council does have the opportunity to simply not have a discharge bylaw.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you very much. Councillor Cooper, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the report. I have a few questions and comments and I wanted to start off with saying I thought it was quite a good report and I, I another way of looking at this bylaw is it might set sort of an example, set the tone for behavior within our township. And that could be very positive. So that's one of the reasons that I be more inclined to support something like this as opposed to oppose it. But to make a few other comments that, that I'd like to gain some understanding about where there's control or no control over discharge and, and start with the saying that for the most part on coastal Georgia Bay, I hardly ever hear a gun, maybe in the fall and November, late, late late October, November, there might be a shotgun go off occasionally. Otherwise, I never hear a gun. So if we're suggesting that we need to have an open house and I, I would suggest more effective would be a survey as opposed to an open house, because the people that will show up to the open house may or may not be our seasonal residents, especially if we do it in the dead of winter. And so, as, and, and frankly, if you had an open house, I would suggest that the, those that are probably pro-gun would be in attendance, not too many others. They just don't think about it. So a survey might be a more appropriate suggestion. But I, I guess I do have a couple of other sort of questions. I understand this, there's no control over crown lands, but we do have a huge area of our, our township that's environmentally protected EPW. And are we allowed to discharge, discharge guns in the EPW area? So I wondered if you could answer that for starters.
So through your chair, if it's private property and you have consent from the owner, then you would be permitted to shoot there. We don't speak about zoning or, or EP in, in this bylaw at all. That's what your question is.
Should we address that?
It's not something I've seen in the bylaws I've reviewed, but I don't know if Derek might have comment.
Through the mayor to councillor Cooper. Thank you, Karina and Josh. By EPW, councillor Cooper is referring to environmentally protected wetlands. We have several categories, including provincially significant wetlands, and I would submit that to restrict or regulate firearms discharge on those lands, whether they're private or crown, would restrict a significantly large portion of this township where otherwise those activities are going on just fine without creating any nuisance or environmental harm. It's a normal practice in those areas.
Sorry, so, so that's something that could be regulated? Is that what you're saying?
Through the mayor, no, that's not what I'm suggesting at all. The zoning bylaw does not regulate the discharge of firearms, nor would I suggest that it do that.
Nor would you suggest that it would do that?
No, I do not suggest that.
Because?
To, through the mayor, in my opinion, to do so would unnecessarily restrict and close off a large portion of the municipality, whether the lands are private or crown, would close those areas off to firearms discharged unnecessarily.
Unnecessarily, because they're environmentally protected. That's interesting. Okay. Well, that, that certainly answers an interesting approach. What about the road allowances that we assign to the Georgia Bay Land Trust?
Part of that agreement said that activities currently taking place could continue.
Which?
Includes hunting.
It could include shooting off guns and
Yes.
In those areas. That's So that's unfortunate too. Well. Way to go. Anyway, yeah, so I think it's a good idea to have this measure, but doesn't sound like it's got teeth for a lot of areas that I, I'm very concerned about. So for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hazelton. Thank you for the report. Unless I'm missing, misinterpreting it. And contrary to my fellow councillors, it does sound like you're providing controls for non-residents because you specifically state that if you don't own the property, you can't shoot off your gun. And you've got to have a property that's big enough or potentially attached to government land, which we can't control anyways. So sounds like there's some language in there that controls non-residents. Am I, am I missing? Am I, am I reading between the lines the wrong way or? Do you agree that there is some protection for our residents to prevent non-residents from coming in and using lands that we can control?
Through your chair, within private property, yeah, I do believe there is something there that will help that, as I mentioned earlier. If these shooters move off crown onto private property and the person who owns that property doesn't give them consent, doesn't have to be written, just consent, then they wouldn't be permitted to shoot there. So then it would give, to me, the way the bylaw is written in a sense, it gives the community a bit more power than the way the bylaw is written now. So they know their neighbors, they know that they're good gun owners or, or if they're concerned about it, or maybe they just don't like Mr. Cooper, they just don't like them shooting off, it's too loud, their dog's afraid. It gives them those abilities within their property and that setback from their houses to make those decisions for themselves.
Okay, so thank you for that. It confirmed something that I thought I was hearing, but everybody else said, no, it doesn't. One question I do have is, and I have to confess, I'm not a gun owner and I don't really want to touch a gun, although my family does. And we have lots locked up in cabinets on my property. But I thought that there was some higher level definition of a firearm is something that has a projectile with four hundred and ninety-five feet per second or greater, and that categorizes it as a firearm. And if it's less than that, then it's not a firearm. So kids BB guns and kids pellet guns and, and things like that are in a different category. Am I missing something?
Through the mayor, thank you. I think what councillor Hazelton's referring to is definitions. I believe they're certainly in the criminal code and they may even be in provincial hunting regulations, but that four hundred and ninety-five foot per second is the distinction between when someone requires a possession and acquisition license to obtain that firearm versus not. So air guns, for example, and I can't remember if it's under four ninety-five or four ninety-five feet per second or less, one can purchase over the counter without the need for a firearms license. Anything more powerful than that triggers the need for a possession and acquisition license or a restricted license.
Okay, so that opens up an interesting discussion, I think, in that you know, the way you worded the bylaw here, it looks like you know, a firearm is something that could hurt somebody. And I'm thinking anything could hurt somebody, even something at two hundred feet per second could hurt somebody. And I'm wondering, should, should the bylaw align itself with this criteria that Derek just highlighted? Because as I say, although I don't want to touch a gun, my kids want, my grandchildren understand how to use a BB gun and a pellet gun and stuff like that. And I don't have a three acre property. So maybe they can't use it. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to figure out where we draw the line here on, on constraint. Because there's a lot of my kids' friends who want to have the same behavior capabilities with their kids or grandchildren. And if they don't have a three acre property, then they can't even allow their kid to shoot a BB gun. According to the way this is worded, that's my understanding.
So through your chair, that, that definition is something we played with a lot and talked to quite a few people about. So our conservation officers who assisted us advised us to use the definition that Derek and Mr. Graziano are referring to, but our prosecutor who did the final review suggested we use this one. So we have time to, you know, as I said, it's a working document, it's just here to get it in front of you. If that's something we want to change, that's something we can change. It's just what our prosecutor has seen and he, you know, that was what they suggested when they did that final review. So can be considered for sure.
Well, thank you for that. I, I just think that if, if there is some definition from a higher body that we can leverage, I think we probably should. And that takes away a lot of the, the concerns that I can see coming out from the community with the younger generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Few comments from me, if I may. One is I believe one of the main purposes of this bylaw, and certainly in, in the last thirty years, your report on it is consistent with that, is more education than enforcement. In that, you know, if you receive inquiries from people, especially out of towners or, or local people for that matter, they say, where am I, am I allowed to shoot in my backyard or aren't I? And then you can reference this document versus making reference to provincial or federal documents, which I presume you're, you're, if, if we have a, a local firearm discharge bylaw, it would be consistent with the feds and the province, but perhaps with a few more criteria built in, certainly you can't have less. The, and I think so then my question, as we go through this exercise of continued review, is I think it's important to take the document and what is in that document that is called exceeds the provincial and federal regulations? Because what's in the document that is consistent with the, the province and, and, and the country, you're just repeating what they already have. And I'm, I'm not criticizing that fact, I'm just saying, what, what, what is actually in the document that is let me call it a farther, a further reach in restrictions than what the, the federal and provincial regulators require. I, I think that's an important thing for us to understand. I was a little bit confused with the, with your comments about dwellings and, you know, the neighbors and all that. Was the dwelling that's owned by the shooter exempted from your dwelling restriction or was it included?
So the way the bylaw that is currently in effect, the ninety-one dash one oh five, it gives no reference of consent. So that would be any dwelling unit, including your own. So if you wanted to shoot something off your back porch currently, you cannot. With the bylaw that is proposed here, if you have consent from the owner, so if the owner is you, then you can do that.
Okay, so, so therefore, what, what, one of the changes, some might see advantage to the current draft, the, the proposed bylaw versus the old one is you can actually shoot in your backyard if you have your own permission. And if you have between two, three, four lots with people agreeing, because, and it adds up to three acres, you can shoot in your backyard if, if you've got enough neighbors agreeing, so you've accumulated three acres and obviously you may or may not know how, how big your lots are or their lots, so you'd have to do a best guess. But okay. And which also means, I mean, like so many other things, a lot of this is based on complaints. If you receive complaints that somebody's shooting and, and keeping the neighbor awake and they're going to phone you and say this guy's shooting. If the neighbors aren't, are okay with, you probably won't receive the complaint anyway, so you don't have to get out your measuring tape. Okay. The so then, then I think, and this is, I'm, I'm repeating a little bit what I said before, is that with this proposed bylaw as it evolves, what additional protection is it actually providing to, I'm going to call it the neighbors, not the shooter, but the people in the rest of our community? Because that, that to me is really the only reason, no, I don't want to say that. One of the main reasons we would consider such a bylaw is that if it makes our non-shooting residents, if I can put it that way, feel safer. And I, I think that's, you know, that's the in my mind personally, the main justification that we might want to have something that exceeds the federal and provincial regulations, if it makes us feel safer. And I'll leave it at that for now.
So through your chair, so there's, all those prohibitions listed are more than what we have currently. In a sense, it just gives the people the opportunity to get consent from their, their neighbors if they're comfortable with that discharge close to their buildings. And the lot size, if they don't all back to crown, they don't all have neighbors that are going to consent to them shooting on or near their property. So they do allow for that, the public trail, educational facility, all those things that I outlined, those prohibited areas, that's not spoken to you right now. That's not in other legislation. So if someone could want to do besides their own township property, again, that's not spoken to in the old bylaw. So those provisions do provide us some, you know, and it's, it's mostly going to be for those calls that we get every October, to be able to educate the people that are coming into the community and say this is what we have in place for them to be aware of, so that they know where they are. Because if you were out and go home by Regatta Beach, you know, is that, is that a public area hall? Yeah, I'd say it is. So should they be shooting off that property? No. But is there a crown behind it that they can safely do that? Absolutely. So it just gives staff the opportunity to have the conversations. If we have those bad actors that come into the community or people, you know, who are unaware here, who have concerned neighbors, like you've mentioned, and there's no, there's no mention of bows in, in the original bylaw. I think, I know that was something I learned really a lot from Mark Griffin about the difference. There is quite a difference in those, you know, tools that they should be treated differently. So they can go just as far as a gun can, they, they're quite strong. But to have them less, you know, they're mostly pointed on a downward angle. When people are hunting, there's all kinds of considerations brought in. I do feel that what is in here is hopefully striking that balance and not going to affect the hunting community or the gun enthusiast community that much. But also gives us the protection for the people who are not, you know, who are concerned about this use or it's affecting their, their lives, their dogs, or you know, feel of safety in the community.
Councillor Graziano.
Thank you, and through your worship, a few things. Ms. King, are you familiar with Criminal Code sections eighty-six and eighty-seven?
That's not something I know off the top of my head, no.
It's reckless discharge of a firearm and dangerous use of a firearm? And those are the two sections in the Criminal Code that cite laws around firearms. Do you feel that this municipality could create bylaws that are stronger than the Criminal Code of Canada?
No, because as I mentioned earlier, any provincial or federal statutes prevail. This is a bylaw just to replace the bylaw or potentially replace the old outdated bylaw to provide that structure.
Are you familiar with the Firearms Act of Canada by chance?
As I mentioned earlier, my husband's a hunter and gun As I mentioned earlier, my husband's a hunter and gun owner. I'm not. This is all things that I've learned up ahead. So any other sections you're going to ask, I probably don't know.
I'm going to add a couple more here. So there's also the Fish and Wildlife Conservatory Act. They all govern the use of firearms and the proper use of firearms. I don't think that our bylaws are going to be able in any way, shape or form exceed any one of those three acts, likely. I've got some concerns with regards to the redundancy of this regulation. I think we've heard through council, and I can't recall who, who was it and it said, or perhaps it was a gentleman that was coming in from one of the associations here that said that this is redundant and likely a lot softer of a concern relative to the other three acts that I just identified, that would likely prohibit people and/or make people that have reckless intent or dangerous intent to think twice about discharging a firearm in areas. I think it's going to impact our hunting and agriculture. And I understand that there is a section there that says that specifically for agricultural use, that it's allowed to fire or discharge a firearm. Suffice it that it's eliminating livestock or potential nuisance animals, but I still feel that there could be potential issues there. I think that it imposes undue restrictions on legal activity for those that actually have been issued legal firearm permits in Canada and have had to undergo those, those courses, as well as understanding what needs to happen in order for them to comply with our laws. And in fact, I think that it's going to affect rural communities such as ours drastically for those that have come to learn and to use them. I know my immediate neighbor to the right of me on Six Mile Lake is an avid hunter, and he lives up here pretty much all the time. And he's out in there with permits, hunting all the time. And this would likely going to be a major concern. There's, there's a couple of other concerns I want to address that I've heard through council today. Specifically, in that there was an issue with regards to perhaps prohibiting EPWs, to which our Director of Planning had suggested against it. And I would say that the likely reason for this has probably led, I'm assuming. And I would argue that if we were going to do that, we'd want to consider fishing as well. Because I know that there's lead weights and, and so on that are used that might impact the environment. If this, if this was strictly education-based, as was cited, I believe, by others on this panel or behind the diocese. And this was to educate people on the, the use of firearms within our municipality, then I suggest we remove the AMP spines and strictly develop a pamphlet that anyone can pick up along their way in through Port Severn, on their way through, to understand what are, what, you know, the bylaws state currently. And what I've come to understand, which is quite interesting, and forgive me, and perhaps you can shed some clarity to this, is that if I were to daisy chain permissions amongst my neighbors, if I'm at the end of a cul-de-sac and I have seven different neighbors that all say, hey, I give you permission to discharge your firearm close by to me, I could effectively discharge my firearm? Is that, is that one of my understandings? So, and I thought I heard that through one of the comments that our mayor had made. If I were to obtain permission from my neighbor and my neighbor's neighbor, so therefore both sides that are budding me, I could effectively discharge my firearm, even though my property is smaller than one acre? Suffice it that the cumulative size of these three properties is greater than three acres or the minimum requirement or threshold? Is that correct?
Yes, with written consent, that's correct.
So regardless of where their structures are, where their, their, their homes, their residences, their cottages are, I can still discharge. It doesn't need to be far enough away or 150 yards from a, a structure or anything along those lines? Because effectively, and where I'm going with this is anyone can, I mean, my whole road can just sign a blanket waiver saying, we give everybody permission to discharge a firearm along the whole road. And that effectively has voided our bylaw then. Is that correct?
It doesn't void the bylaw by any means, I wouldn't say.
At least on our road, it does.
Hang on, sorry. There are still the setbacks from the houses. That, that is putting it in the community's hands. They know you as a neighbor. They know you. If they trust you and they give you consent, who are we to tell them that they shouldn't? That's what, that's the bylaw that we have in front of council here today. If that needs to change or grow or evolve, then it can. But that's something we've written, because there are those pieces like we showed on the slideshow that have those little laws, or like Mr. Price, they have these issues that they need to address or they feel they need to address. Why not if all the neighbors that are, kind of make three acres parcel with consent, written consent, then that's, they would have the ability to do so.
And is written consent, just out of curiosity, just for clarification, as it stands right now, is written consent a billboard at the top of my road saying, anyone is welcome here with a firearm? Suffice it that everyone on that road agrees?
Written consent would be from one owner to the gun owner or gun enthusiast who is wanting to hunt on that property or discharge on that property or against your property.
And you can understand where I'm going with this. If I were to put a sign saying, insert your name here, I give you blanket consent, and someone takes that off of a post and puts their name, and now effectively they have written consent by me, I'm assuming that they can. Perhaps there, there may be some consideration with respect to the daisy chaining of, of properties. Again, I think there's a lot of work to be done here before we even consider rolling this out. And likely, that's why it's here at Cow. I strongly disagree with this bylaw. I think the bylaws are fine as they are. And perhaps we should consider the gentleman here advising us that many municipalities have repealed their bylaws because of the acts that currently are governing, you know, proper firearm use. Thank you.
Through your chair, just in reference to what Mr. Rickman mentioned, that's conversations that him and I had and I've had with senior management as well. If you were to repeal the current bylaw that stands 91-105, I would suggest that something you get a legal opinion on for the liability side of it. That's something we have currently in effect. We've had since 91. If you take that away, is, is the township become liable? We've said it's, you know, prohibited up until this point. And if you take it away, that's, that's something that has to be considered. It's not something I've investigated at this time, because that was not my direction. So just for clarity purposes.
Counselor Bocheck. Thank you. And I am going to return to some of my former statements, and I'm one not to repeat myself at this table. But we need to stay in our own lane here. This isn't our lane. This is the lane of the RCMP, the OPP, the MNRF and other government agencies that control hunters, firearms and sports shooters. No way should we be involved in this at all. If the residents wanted us to have this bylaw, they would certainly be phoning you and championing this cause. But they're not. Just the exact opposite. So repeating what I said earlier, I would like to see this bylaw not go into effect. And I, and I would say that this committee of the whole should not recommend to council that we, that we support this. And at the very least, if this council wants to move ahead with this, I suggest that we have, like I said, a, a meeting inviting all residents of the township in the evening in a public place that can hold a venue of this size. But at the same time, our residents are not in favor of this whatsoever. And if you want the data, I have the data as well, too. So it's up to this council which way you go. But I would suggest that we don't move forward with this. We kill it here today. But if we don't, then let's move into the public process and get public input from everyone in this township. Thank you.
Just as a reminder, let's respect staff and the work they've done, because they were directed to do this. And they didn't come here with a bylaw that they said improved. They came here with a bylaw for discussion, a draft bylaw rather, for discussion.
You're, you're presenting that to me?
I'm presenting that to everyone, but I think we have to remember that, you know, there's been, and, and a lot of it I've seen in the social media, there's been this criticism of staff for presenting this to us. And I don't think that's fair to staff, because we as council, this council asked staff to review the firearm discharge bylaw that we have.
I don't believe that's correct whatsoever. I don't believe that was our, that was not what council asked for.
Just through your chair, I did start the presentation with the actual resolution that outlined for me to do just what I've done. It was voted unanimously. I went back and watched the video to be sure, because it's been over, you know, almost a year to be sure what I've been told to do. That first piece is to review our discharge bylaw to ensure resident's safety and protected discharge firearms cannot damage private property and prepare a report with recommendations for any measures to increase these protections. Then there's sub pieces of the resolutions, which is talking to the MNR and talking to the OPP, which I've said that we're doing that still. It's ongoing. So I believe that resolution, that's, that's what I've done here today. This was not a project that myself or Tony wanted to take on. This is something that we were directed to do, and we're happy to have learned what we have and got to the point where we are now. Is it, is it a final draft? Absolutely not. It's the best draft I've come up with in this time, with all the input from all the parties that are present and that I've, that I've reached out to through this learning process. So I agree with you, Mr. Bocheck, that, that a public meeting should be held, for sure. I want to clear up these misconceptions and make sure people understand what is written, so that we're all on the same page. If they feel that this bylaw or municipal involvement in, you know, discharge is not appropriate, that's a decision beyond me. That, I know there's federal, like it must, you know, Christopher Graziano was saying, I know those other legislations exist. I know they speak to it. But we currently have a bylaw in place that would not assist us if we had these issues on private property. So just for clarity, that, that's where, that's why I'm here.
Is this supplemental to that? Go ahead. I want to know your feelings as a representative of our township and the bylaw officer, if you would be opposed to having a public meeting.
She just stated she was in favor.
I wasn't speaking to you. I was speaking to her.
Yeah, point of order.
So would you be in favor of having a public meeting, I'm sorry, I can't see over there, a public meeting sometime in the future to invite everybody, but then come back, say, in August? I mean, we need time to digest this. Everybody needs time to listen and figure out what's going on. And I don't think coming to council next month to ratify this and get it approved is fair game. Would you agree that maybe a public meeting and then come back in, say, August or September with this? What do you feel about?
Yeah, so through your chair, that is something I've suggested. I don't feel there's any rush. We don't have to rush this. There's not these private land issues that we need to resolve. We're working actively with the MNR to address those issues. I'm absolutely, and the chief is absolutely willing to do that public meeting in the evening, whenever suits. I would love to put out some clarifications and advertisements to understand the bylaw and open my phone up first. Since this has been posted on the agenda, my phone has been ringing. I've spoke to lots of those big names in the community to explain it. And most of the time, once I'm done explaining it and saying my spiel, they're like, oh, okay, that's not that bad. Yeah. So I want the opportunity to have that, to have those discussions. That's not something I would ever be opposed to. Absolutely. I'd be happy to bring it back to Cow for consideration in August or September, depending on what this public process looks like, because obviously this is a busy time of year for us and council in the community. I want the seasonal community involved as well, as, as Mr. Cooper mentioned. That's not something I'm trying to push through or sneak by. I'm just bringing it here to have this discussion today and we can go from there.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Cooper.
I'll be very brief. I just wanted to say that if we are going to vote on something that might include a public meeting, I would also suggest a survey, because 90% of our population will not be coming to that public meeting, because they do not care about having a gun. So I think we're going to make sure we get to our entire community. It wouldn't be a public meeting. They won't show up. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I didn't have my phone. Draft motion reads, moved by Counselor Jarvis, seconded by Counselor Predko. Be it resolved that Cow recommends staff schedule a public open house and survey and bring a revised draft discharge bylaw back to Cow. All those in favor, your worship. Okay. Well, then obviously, nobody else wants to pass this yet, so I'm going to go in order. So Counselor, Counselor Graziano, then Counselor Bocheck.
Thank you. Ms. King, you had mentioned that there was the resolution at the onset of this, this presentation. I didn't see that as I was looking at the report. And I don't think the resolution is attached to the report. Could you put that back on the screen for a second? Oh, you emailed it to some. Got it. Do you know who the, the originating mover and seconder was for that motion?
I do. So by Counselor Predko, seconded by Counselor Bocheck.
Okay, so Counselor Predko and Counselor Bocheck brought forward a motion a year ago.
Yep.
Requesting that this come back with a bylaw amendment?
Yep.
I don't recall that, but if you can circulate that, that'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I will circulate to council the new business item.
Josh can also pull it up on the screen if that would help.
I tried, but I tried through the resolution number and I just couldn't find it on our search database, so. Thank you. I also, if I may, I'd like to make an additional comment. Clearly, a survey has already been issued to our municipality, so perhaps we can forego it, because 90% of our community don't own guns, according to a recent comment. So, thank you.
Sorry, you don't think we should survey because 90% aren't gun owners? Did I understand you correctly?
According to a comment that was made behind the diocese here, 90% of our community does not own guns and.
But I still think they should have put input into this.
Fair, fair, if you feel that that's the case. But 90% of our community don't own guns, so I'm not sure how we came to that number.
Well, I have no idea if that's the true number.
Maybe there was a, a survey that was done.
But I don't, I don't think this survey should be strictly for gun owners. I think it should be for all our residents, if they choose to participate.
I, I'll, I'll argue that those numbers may not reflect accurately. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't. All right. I'm, I'm going to try one more time. Moved by Counselor Jarvis, seconded by Counselor Predko. Be it resolved that Cow recommends staff schedule a public open house and survey and bring a revised draft discharge bylaw to Cow. All those in favor? And we have six out of seven approving. Thank you very much. All right, where are we on our agenda now? We're on the, we're on the, I was on the wrong sheet. There we go. New business. So Counselor, new business is Counselor Predko reevaluating council composition to make it more effective. Counselor Predko.
Thank you. And through your worship, so this motion has got a very long title on it, but I'm hoping you've read the entire report, because I think there's a few important issues mixed in with this motion. We've had agenda items at Cow for the process improvements and honorariums for councils, councillors, which would impact the potential pool of nomination for council roles. Now, we're in a position of being in a municipality with strong mayor powers. We've heard the mayor's opinion on these powers and read the clerk's report in yesterday's consent agenda. But council needs an opportunity to discuss these powers and their impact on democracy in our township. And while our mayor has said that he won't use these powers, these powers still exist and there's no mechanism to refuse the powers for our municipality in the future. In my report, I've made a few suggestions on how I think I can, we can increase the likelihood of being able to increase the compensation for councillors in the future with a suggestion of decreasing the size of council, which would allow for the current budget for honorariums and expenses to be spread over fewer positions. A byproduct of decreasing the size of council in the township would be that we'd no longer be subject to strong mayor powers. As written, the strong mayor powers could be considered for councils of six or greater. And the powers could be considered an impediment to fair representation by giving the mayor a veto power over the planning issues that may not be in the interest of coastal or inland communities. The current balance of council helps keep the balance of power, I think, fairly equal. And I've included through conversations with Counselor Cooper, the history of how we got to the ward boundaries we have today that came through consultations and consultant report in 2012, that I think strongly supports the notion that our communities, coastal or inland, need strong representation and fair and balanced representation. And I think we need to make sure that we're preserving the coastal community's voice in the township. And it shouldn't be able to be overwritten by a mayor who maybe has a different perspective. I think with the seven council with strong mayor powers, a vote of the mayor's veto powers or the, the mayor's motion would carry with just two councillors in support for that 30%. So what I'd like to do is open up the conversation to try to get people's feedback on, on how we can, A, maintain fair representation in the township as we look for trying to increase. As we look for trying to increase. Interest in, uh, uh, people being nominated for the role of councillor or mayor in the township. Um, to help increase the diversity of candidates that we get. And with a smaller, um, council, we may have more accountability individually for the decisions that are being made. Um, there are downsides as well, and I think, um, that is increased workload and, um, I think there may be some concerns that by decreasing council. Individual voices may not be as strongly heard. Um, but that's what conversation at Cow is about, trying to get people to, uh, express their views. And hopefully we can be in a position now for moving forward with any kind of changes to our council composition. To implement changes that would, um, be made before we came into an election period where we would be considered lame duck council. And, um, impacting the outcome of the next election. So I think we've got a good window to have this conversation. And I know it's late in the day, but, um, I'm happy to, uh, start kickoff the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm presuming councillor Cooper's hands were from the last discussion?
No, I took mine out for this.
Okay. Well, then councillor Cooper.
Sorry, did you want? No, no, please. You have one. Ten years over, over. You.
Councillor Cooper.
So, thank you. And, and, um, I could say a, a number of things and I won't, uh, other than to say that, uh, I think it's a worthwhile conversation. But I would really welcome, before I make my comments, hearing, uh, from the mayor because, um, I, I had a nice story, conversation with the mayor, um, about, uh, strong mayor powers. And, uh, I'd like to hear what he has to say about it because even though the province has said that's something that can be executed. I got the impression from our mayor that he was pretty interested in working with our council. So, uh, I think we should start with that. And, uh, then I'd be happy to offer up my, my, is that all right with you councillor Predko?
Of course, this is an open conversation. I'm, you know, I'm not trying to preclude any, I mean, I'm making a suggestion of an outcome. But I realize decreasing council would affect the, uh, membership around this table and, uh, I'm just trying to be open and, and have an open conversation.
Um. Yeah, I, 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 I think this conversation is a very worthwhile conversation. I'll call it in spite of the strong mayor aspect, even though that, that is definitely one aspect of it. Um, is not my intention to exercise the strong mayor. Powers. Um, I think as, as councillor Predko pointed out. That in certain items, in theory, if I have two people on side, there's three against four, we could carry some things with three votes instead of four votes. I don't think that's very democratic. Um, I, I think the, the, the fact that the strong mayor means I have to sign a few more pa- pieces of paper with regards to the budget is. You're awkwardly silliness because I think that, I think. Whatever size our council is, I think everybody should be participating in the budget. And I think what I appreciate is that there is a diverse. Set of opinions here. I don't always agree with some of the things I hear at council, but that's what we're supposed to have. We're supposed to disagree to some extent because we want to bring in the wealth of experience and perspectives. Um. What, one of the, one of the things that it's, 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 it's a minor aside, but I'm going to throw it out anyway, is that a couple of weeks ago, uh, when I was attaching, attending the. OPP detachment board meeting for Southern Georgian Bay, I was, I was actually at the tiny, uh, township building. And, and I learned a couple of things while I was there. Um, one was that they have a budget that's roughly 50% larger than ours. Um, I think their population is somewhat larger than ours. And I think it's, I think it's more a 50/50 between seasonal and. Uh, rather, and, and the, and the mayor there was, um, made a side remark to me when I was talking about all the cars and, and how many of them were actually white and had little crests on the side. That they had a bylaw meeting there earlier that day with 17 staff members. I mean, we, we know that basically tiny is an oversized, no parking zone and obviously they need people enforcement. I mention all that because here's a township that's a bit bigger than this and their council's five members. Because I counted the seats and, because we were meeting in council chambers and, um, I, I, so to me, I don't plan on being a strong mayor. I hope I don't get backed into a corner where. I feel desperate and I have to exercise those powers because I'd rather not. Um, so don't do that. Okay. Don't back me into a corner. Um, with, with that. I, I think it's, I, 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 I think councillor Predko bringing this forward is in, an interesting discussion because if we get down to. Five councillors versus seven, um, A, we sidestep the strong mayors, but B, more importantly, are we creating a more efficient? And more affordable, a more accessible, uh, more constructive council or not? I think that's the more important question. And. With that, I'll go, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And, and, uh, I think, uh, your comments are very much appreciated and, and I would say that, uh, um, the strong mayors, your attitude towards strong mayors is, is, uh, very refreshing. Um, but. What happens if you're not here? Um, and we have another mayor who takes a completely different approach. So that, I'm not sure there's too much we can do about that. Um, because of what's the province has done, uh, I, I find the whole concept semi undemocratic. Um, but, uh, that's just my view. Um, but I, I do think in order to. Completely and fully understand the other part of this question is to do some homework and, and the homework is things like reading the, the Carter principles that were applied when we. Did our ward boundary review and understanding that, for example, uh, just representing electors is not. Just what a councillor does, or for that matter, somebody that's a, an MP or an MPP. You represent everybody. And so that population spread is a very different number than just electors. And we. And, and we may have writings where there are more electors than others. And that often happens when you've got rural and urban writings. Look in Canada, you've got a hundred thousand approximately electors, uh, in Toronto for a riding. And 10,000 in outer, outside Saskatchewan, shall we say. So, so it's a completely different sort of, uh, factor is, is recognizing that. If there's a large rural area to look after, you may only capture 10,000 residents in that, in that, um, uh, writing. And in Toronto, you, you've got a hundred thousand there, but frankly, they're all living more or less in the same area. They need more or less the same services. So it's more homogeneous. And I think those are some of the things that, that came out in the, in the Carter principles and that. That, those Carter principles can act as sort of a base for understanding our ward boundary system, whether we have five or seven or not. Um, in some ways I think it would be better to be smaller, but other ways, what about our representation at the district? If we got rid of our district councillors, what message would that send to the province and the district about? Our relationship. And that's, to me, a slightly somewhat important point. Because frankly, we go there, uh, but how much do we accomplish? Uh, what sort of, uh, voting power do we have, et cetera, et cetera? So those are things that are, are things that worry me. As far as sort of the ward boundary system, um, all I can say is that the reason we have the ward boundary system that we have in place now. Is that back in, I don't know, 2010 or whatever it was around that period of time, we started looking at the composition. Of the township and, and the way it was represented. And I, I can tell, uh, one of the, one of the things that really resonated with the, those on. Six Mile Lake, for example, at the time, was that there was a real problem because there, there was a, a ward boundary that ran right through the middle of. Six Mile Lake. So how, the north part of Six Mile Lake was represented by one person and the south by another. The other thing that was problematic there is that. Structurally, our township by communities, et cetera, can be more easily identified by north, south versus east, west. And so the ward system we had was three east, west wards. And that ended up, um, at the time not being that ideal. So I, I thought it important to bring that out as well. And, uh, when we, we brought in, uh, a Dr. Williams, uh, he reviewed our, our system here. And, um, made some recommendations which were sort of contrary to the suggestions that had. Basically to keep the system we had in place, that was the ward boundary person that, that came in to assess what we had. It wasn't an award boundary expert. It was really a, a CAO that, that had, uh, had retired and, and decided to do some consulting. And that's who we used. And, uh, and the direction that he'd been given was that we have three communities of interest. MacTir, Part Seven and Honey Harbor. That's it. That's who we are. Nobody else. That's what we had at the time and that was the mindset. Thankfully, Dr. Williams said, wait a minute, you've got more communities of interest than that. You've, you've got, you know, uh, Stewart Lake, you've got, um, and, and MacTir, but Stewart Lake and you've got Go Home Lake and on and on. It could go down. Through the whole lake system and those are specific communities of interest. Some of them very big. It's something like, I think, 900. Uh, residences in, in Six Mile Lake, aren't there? Something to that effect. So it's, it's a big community. A huge population if you add in what is counted at the district of Muskoka for second homes, which would be almost four times that amount. So now you're talking about 2,400, um, people. That's a lot. So I think what he identified was, uh, another way of looking at our township was. Sort of north, south, obviously not ignoring the hamlets or small towns, but putting them in a, a similar community of interest. And that's, that's what we ended up with was the system we have in place. We have. I think of, you know, all, all that said, I think we seem to have a pretty good system. We have an uneven number so. That when you vote on things, generally you're going to probably end up with, um, a reasonable outcome because it's not an even number. So it's not always going to be. You know, three, three, if we had six, for example, which I think we did have for a while. I'm not sure, but I think we did. I think we had five and then we went to six or something, if I recall. Yeah, no, but I'm talking about previous to this layer, this, this setup. It's not right, Brian? Were there not six?
I think there's six, yeah.
And then I think there had, yeah, and I think there had been five at one point, but anyway, it was six. And, and it, that's a bit more awkward. So we've gone to seven and. Um, you know, would it be nice to have higher compensation? Maybe. Um, I think what we want to make sure is that in the future is to make sure we can attract people to. Run for council and that they'll be willing and interested in representing our communities. I'm not sure that it's financial. Uh, maybe it needs to be also considered as, as to, uh, you know, the amount of time and effort that it goes into what we do here. Um, for relatively low amount of compensation. It's a volunteer position and you have to sort of say to yourself, if you're going to do this, uh, consider it volunteer work. That's what I do anyway. So those are my ramblings about, uh, uh, that, but I just thought I'd throw it out my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Graziano.
Thank you. And through your worship, um, a couple of concerns with regards to the recommendation, um, that I'd like to identify. Uh, one is reduced representation for our constituents. So similar to, or in line with what councillor Cooper was identifying with regards to communities of interest. I think that larger wards would equal fewer voices, um, for our constituents and would dilute the, uh, the voices for constituents by reducing the numbers of councillors. Of course, it'll lead to larger wards. Which likely will have, uh, a fewer or have fewer representation or representatives rather, uh, within those communities of interest. And, and I would not be one to even raise my hand on issues that. Arise in Cognation. So, um, hypothetically speaking, if I, if we were to go, you know, east versus west or north versus south, or however this would ever consider to be put back to two. Ward councillors, uh, I would likely never be able to have as much intimate knowledge of the area as perhaps councillor Jarvis or councillor Cooper or councillor Hazelton. Uh, and so I'm quite concerned that by reducing representation, it would not necessarily effectively, um, do justice to our constituency. Um, second to that is going to be decreased accountability, uh, because with a larger pool of people contacting you now, um, you know, it's, it's going to be harder for us to be able to. To respond to the inquiries. Um, and it becomes more difficult for residents to identify and hold specific, you know, uh, representatives accountable as well. Um, you know, things are going to get diluted and our attention is going to get diluted as well as, uh, you know, our ability to service them. Um, I, I, I see there, this, this potentially being an impact, uh, to seasonal and permanent residents. Um, I. Couldn't count how many times, uh, during my campaign, I went door to door and people asked me, am I a local resident? And the only one I think behind this diocese right now that lives here full time is one councillor. Um, and that councillor is the representative of our full-time permanent residencies and they do see him as that. Um, I cannot replace that, uh, unfortunately, as much as I stay up here. I just don't have that, 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 that embeddedness within the community as, as councillor Bocheck does. And, and I think that. By reducing this down, the likelihood of them seeing that representation, um, would likely be far and few between because again, uh, it is predominantly seasonal here in, in our area. Um, I think there's a potential for a reduction in diversity of thought. Uh, having seven heads is better than having four or five. Um, and perspective, everything's a matter of perspective and, and, and understanding, uh, you know, the diversity and, and the, the nuanced ideas and, and creative ideas that we bring. Uh, collectively as, as a group of seven. Um, our paintings may be awful, but, uh, that's why I said our paintings may be awful. I made a reference there, but, uh. But, uh, our diversity of thought is, is, is sound and I think that we should maintain it. Um, which then kind of goes on to now this concept of group think. I think that there would be a higher potential for group think if in the event that we diluted and made our, 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 um, diocese smaller. And because it'd be far easier to influence four than, than seven or two versus five and, and so on and so on. Uh, and then lastly, of course, an increased workload, um, for the remaining councillors. And, and so that would then beg the question, do we make this a full-time position? Uh, with potentially now that our constituency is that much larger, with potential support function or support staff supporting us like other municipalities that have larger. Um, you know, uh, larger groups of, of, uh, of, uh, rate pairs that they're responsible for. Um, and then aside from that, what's the legal ramifications and the procedural ramifications that may come out of this as well? Um, and so again, and this is not even considering the, the, um, consultant who had, and I can't recall the doctor's name. Um, but the doctor's recommendations after really strongly considering what we need to support our community. Um, and so for all those reasons. Uh, I, I feel that perhaps, um, albeit a sound suggestion, um, if we were to remove roles, perhaps that's district. But even so, district councillors serve a purpose, uh, and they are the representative of district. I mean, I would not know what's going on at district. If it wasn't for councillor Bocheck chiming in on Facebook saying, hey, I'm your local district councillor and here's what we're doing for, uh, for garbage and so on. So. With that said, uh, those are my reasons for why I think perhaps we should strongly opt not to change the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bocheck.
Uh, thank you. And, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, a, a couple of comments on this and a couple of statements. Obviously in a perfect world, the province would change its mind and we wouldn't be in this, uh, strong mayor position. And I think if I understand the provincial government properly, the reason that the mayors were given the strong powers is because of the province's will and want to, um, engage in more housing, um, affordable housing and open up a lot of lands so that they can be developed. Um, a pretty poor excuse for why we would change our council composition. I had, do have a question and perhaps councillor Predko could help me with this. Um, the composition of a smaller council would be such that I could imagine would be, you would have an east and west. So in the, on, on the, on the, um, on the mainland, you would have a councillor that would cover. The whole inland and then you have a district councillor which also covers the inland and goes to district. Same with the, the coastal Georgian Bay. You would have a representative that would do the two wards as they are now, um, Cognation and Honey Harbor. But then you would also have a district councillor up at district. So right now as a district councillor. I still have wards that I have to service. I still service MacTir. I still service, or should say, uh, the two different wards. I still service Mac Tier. I still service, or should say, uh, the two different wards. Um, I service them both as well as being a, a district rep. So would this, uh, composition be, um, you would have a district councillor and a inland councillor and same with the, the coastal area? And then you would have a mayor without strong mayor powers. Is that where we're headed?
More or less.
More or less? Okay. Sure. Okay. Um, so I g- I guess that's the gist of my comments. This is a great opportunity to air out what we think. And, um, one other last question and I ask this of the mayor perhaps because he would be mostly in the know. Is it possible for a municipality such as ours to have a chair instead of a mayor?
The clerk, I think, was keen on responding to that. Does that make a big difference in the composition of our council?
The municipal act specifically references the head of council, which generally is referred to as the mayor.
So ahead of-
If you call them a chair or the grand supreme or whatever, they're, they're still the head of council and have the same authorities and protocols under, if you change the mayor's title right now to chair, it doesn't change his authority under the municipal act because you gave him a new title.
I beg to differ on that because our chair at the District of Muskoka does not have a vote.
That's because that's the District of Muskoka Act and he is an upper tier municipality that has its own piece of legislation that is not the same as the township of Georgian Bay.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one point of clarification. Do you know what we call the ree- microphone? Sorry. The other title is ree-
Yes.
That could be used for A U.
The grand poo ball? Um, just for clarification, um, the chair at district council does have a vote since he can break a tie. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Jarvis.
Yeah, I just, I can add much more to this conversation except just to clarify that the strong mayor powers are, the excuse for them was more housing, but the actual powers provided as illustrated by what happened in Aurelia recently, uh, can be rather disruptive to, uh, to council and staff. Uh, where the Aurelia, um, mayor decided arbitrarily to disregard a, a nominee or a hiring of a C A O. Um, which is rather disturbing to have read that report. Um, and I have talked with uh, Counselor Pretko about this and I, I thought the whole idea was rather intriguing. Uh, and I'm really happy that, uh, Counselor Pretko put the work into bringing this report forward. Um, his reasons, his pro-reasons are very, very, um, informative. Um, unfortunately, I think they fall a little bit short. I think the idea that, uh, we have couns- councillors that are part of this council and mayor who are acclaimed is an issue, uh, from the standpoint of the voting public. And maybe as a result of what's happened south of the border, maybe we'll see more input in that go-around. I don't know. But it's also the, uh, average age of this council. I don't want to even speculate what that is. Uh, but I'm very happy that we have a couple of younger councillors on board. Uh, thank you guys. Um, sharper minds because they're younger is always good. Um, but-
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Uh, having said that though, if we were to reduce the size of this council and therefore make more funds available for bringing councillors on board, I don't think we encourage anybody any more, um, interest because if you doubled my salary, you still wouldn't be getting too many people coming on board for the salary. I could tell you that right now. Um, which is problematic in and of itself. Uh, the strong mayor powers is the biggest um, problem I see and greatest reason for considering this, uh, idea. And, and as Counselor Cooper noted, while our mayor is at this time indicating that he will not be exercising his powers, he still has them. He can. And we can't say he doesn't get a chance to use them. And if he were to be replaced, uh, down the road, then we don't know what another mayor might do in that position. So that's a really, really significant consideration, uh, when we're looking at this. Um, representation is enough, but is another encounter of that. It's the representation. Areas of interest or regions of interest. Uh, we have a very, um, dynamic municipality in many regards with different interests. And they, we really do feel, I think we do all, uh, represent those interests at this table. And I think as Counselor Graziano said, having all those great interests can make for some very colorful and long conversations, but doesn't make them any less relevant. And, um, so if somebody was to ask my opinion right now, I'd be voting to stay the same. But I think it's a conversation we got to continue with.
Thank you. Counselor Hazelton, do you want to jump in? Why? Sure. Thank you. Um, but I have questions first. Um, I've been chatting with, uh, others in the room here seeking to find a definition of how our compensation is defined. And, um, I don't have an answer yet, so I'll just put that out there that, um, unless you have an answer. How, how did we get the thirty thousand number?
Well, we, we review it.
I know.
I, I understand that, but we review it in context of other townships. And so I would like to suggest that my belief, uh, based on being in the library board and looking at competitive compensation everywhere, everywhere else, uh, that, uh, it's highly unlikely that we are going to get access to any significant amount of money. And by the way, if we went from seven to five, that's only eighty-five hundred dollars. It's not double, Mr. Counselor Jarvis. So
He was hoping.
He was hoping. So we're not going from thirty to sixty. We might go from thirty to thirty-eight, five, which is, uh, chump change for anybody and nobody's going to make a decision to be a councillor. So I would just offer that as an interesting comment. Um, there was a suggestion-
Point of order with regards to my math calculation.
No, it's a point of disorder. So then there was a comment about, um, you know, perhaps, um, there would be a more competitive, uh, co- a structure in people getting elected. Uh, you know, maybe less people acclaimed. Well, my belief on that is, um, those who get acclaimed get acclaimed because they aren't doing such a bad job. And historically, it's really difficult to unseat a, an existing councillor or elected official unless they're doing a really bad job. In other words, the differentiation between the known that you don't like and the unknown that you might like is very difficult to rationalize. And so I would suggest that, uh, being acclaimed is actually a really good thing in your, in our communities because the community generally don't believe that somebody else can do a better job. I'm not saying they're going to say, we're doing a great job. Nobody says that. You never really vote for somebody. You always vote against somebody else. So I, I would, anyway, so there, there's a couple of interesting comments, I think, interesting that, uh, kind of position the concept of, of changing our structure. Um, I've heard other comments. We don't need to keep repeating them, but, uh, just to touch on them briefly. Communities of interest. Honey Harbor is different from Ward Two. I think Ward One is different from Ward Three. And I don't know how we could be effective in representing our communities if we were to trash, uh, those four areas. And so it kind of leaves me, the only solution if we were, if we're thinking about reducing headcount. And by the way, in my opinion, if you reduce headcount, you're going to reduce cost. You take two councillors out, you're going to save the taxpayer sixty thousand dollars. Uh, nobody's going to get any more than, you know, a- any more money because we're going to be in a competitive structure, comparative structure with other municipalities. Um, and, uh, somewhat to Counselor Cooper's point, maybe if we just stop sending councillors to district because you don't have any say there anyways. Three out of twenty-two is pretty much equal to one out of twenty-two. And as far as I understand it, the mayor is always an ex officio member of, uh, district council or the representative or whatever. So, um, you know, yeah, maybe we could take two out. I can't see that being particularly, uh, effective because if we're forced to stay in the district, I think having more people there to champion anything that we think we might want to do is probably a good thing. And with that, all pause. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I appreciate, uh, Counselor Pretko bringing this forward and the conversation that it's initiating. I think it's a a good conversation to have. Um, a couple of comments about district. The district, district council is, has been created by districts past and at this point, two of the townships have three reps and the, the third township and the three towns have four reps. That's where you come up with the twenty-two. Um, and it's been noted on more than one occasion at district that that means that the towns outvote the townships when it comes to some matters that that makes a difference. And we won't go down that road. And there has been talk on more than one occasion at district over the last number of terms of reducing the number of district councillors. And, uh, and the number of being reduced has been anywhere from, I'll say, ten to twenty. Um, so it's a wide range and part of that conversation included at some points having each municipality have an equal number. I would not be in favor of us reducing our district councillors without, I mean, not only will the clerk explain we can't, but I think it'd be stupid to do so because if we have one rep there, um, what is that one rep going to do? Sit in all four committees as the current structure is and all, everything else? And have one vote knowing that that vote, vote is entirely pointless and the only power that that one rep will have is the, trying to get the ability to persuade people. Yeah, an ability that I've tried to exercise on more than one occasion. Once or twice with success, I'd like, I'd like to think. Others may disagree. Um, so I, I think the idea of district council, uh, reducing our number there is not, does not make sense. Um, I think that what is interesting to note is that the, the towns at district council, they, they, I think all three, but I could be corrected, uh, elect their, um, district reps at large. In other words, um, a whole bunch of people say they want to be district council and whoever gets to the, the four with the most votes, they become the district councillors. They're not they're not representing a particular corner of the municipality. They're representing the whole municipality. Um, we do it east and west, um, or if you will, Georgian Bay and inland lakes. And that's an oversimplification, but you know, wards two and four and one and three. Um, and one of the advantages of that is it means that somebody from Georgian Bay, the bay side will be at district council and, and somebody from the inland side of our township will be at district council. Um, historically, like pre-two thousand fourteen, um, we, our rep, our, our wards were designed on the old geographic townships. We had Freeman, Gibson and Baxter were the three what they often call geographic townships, which were created back in the late eighteen hundreds when somebody just took straight lines and drew them regardless of what the lakes or the shorelines or this or that. You know, and, and, and you end up with, uh, weird and wonderful things like Six Mile Lake being cut in half. I mean, it's still, it's still true with, um, the northern end of Muskoka where the top ends of those lakes, uh, Ross and Joe are in Segwin. Like, is there a logic to it? You know, my opinion. Um, and, but I, I think, you know, it, it, if, if, and that's a big if, if we were to pursue, um, this, this proposal going to five, I can imagine having two wards. One ward would be predominantly Georgian Bay coast. The other ward would be predominantly inland lakes. And whether we use the four hundred as, as the division to try to equalize the population and I don't, you know, that would maybe Go Home Lake will, would end up in Georgian Bay. And maybe so would Oak Bay, which is right now with Fort Severn. Like, we'd, that would have to be visited if we went down that road. Because that is one of the challenges we have right now is Ward Three is our biggest and growing the fastest as far as numbers of people are concerned. So that's something would need to be, uh, addressed. And I think should be addressed, if not by this council, by the, the next council as to how do we adjust those boundaries to maintain a relative, um, balance. Um, I'm going to disagree with Counselor Hazelton about acclamation and being a vote of confidence. I think rather it's a, a lack of interest in getting involved in our council. Um, because the great majority of our residents, and I mean this with zero disrespect, they don't want to be involved. They want to be left alone. They want to mind their own business unless something's going on that affects them directly. And then they may appear like a very patient resident we have now at the back of the room. Um, otherwise they don't want to be involved in most cases and I don't blame them. Um, I think to encourage more people to run, I don't think salary is going to do it. I mean, it may not hurt, but I don't think it's going to do it. I think to encourage more people to run, we'd have to look at, okay, those who are interested, why aren't they running? One explanation I've received is that because they have day jobs. So they would, if, if our municipality had evening meetings like many other municipalities, they might be more interested in running. The counter to that is, um, people who are, uh, seasonal and boat in would rather have daytime, uh, meetings because that means they might be able to boat, uh, home without being in darkness. Um, you know, it's, it, no matter what we do, and by the way, it's similar discussions are taking place at district and have off and on for many years. No matter what we do, some will be less encouraged and some more encouraged to per- potentially participate. Um, so that being all said, I think it's, it's, it's a reasonable conversation. Um, I think that we can ask people to create a report, but I'm not sure we're at that point now. I think my, my feeling is we should just continue discussion. Um, not necessarily. But I'm going to give everybody a second chance. And Clerk Way is nervous about that. So speak to me, Clerk Way.
Um, two things. One, we're getting close to four-thirty and we still have another meeting to finish. Uh, two, there seems to be a lot of misinformation being said around this table and uninformed information being shared. And I feel like if the discussion continues wholeheartedly without that information being presented in a staff report, that it might be all for nothing and you're going to have to repeat the discussion with information.
Are you volunteering to create a staff report?
I would rather have a discussion with accurate information being shared than inaccurate information being shared.
I take that she's volunteering to give us some information if we ask her. All right. Second. Um, let's, let's see if we can do a second round and get out of Cal before four-thirty so we can get on to finishing off our planning council. That's, that would be my proposal. So, um, Counselor Graziano, you, yours up first from what I can tell.
Thank you, your worship. And just, I made some notes with respect to, um, the issue regarding strong mayor powers and the, uh, the reason for, or the suggested reasons for why to reduce. Um, I feel that reducing the size of council to five members can amplify the influence, uh, of the mayor, making it easier for one individual to dominate the decision-making process with strong mayor powers. Um, and/or if we reduce down to five where there may not be strong mayor powers. Um, again, this, this holds true. Uh, it would allow for, uh, to, it potentially may amplify the influence of the mayor, um, which could run counter to the attempt or the intent to reduce the, uh, the effectiveness of strong mayors. Um, a smaller council structure combined with these, um, expanded mayorial powers may make it easier for, or, you know, for you or not for you literally, but for the mayor rather, uh, to shape the municipality's priorities and decisions without the necessary scrutiny or debate of a larger group, uh, such as the seven of, or the six of us. Um, a smaller councillor, uh, excuse me, a smaller council, um, especially one with, uh, a stronger mayor powers through the, in the amplified influ- um, in- influence, uh, risks fostering political polarization. Uh, with fewer councillors, it becomes easier for- With fewer counselors, it becomes easier for a single political faction or interest group to dominate the council's agenda. And that could be a concern as well. A smaller council with strong, stronger mayor powers, again, referring back to my initial point, may also encourage political infighting or make it easier for factions to push through policies without full democratic scrutiny, and that's a concern to me as well. In addition to that, the township of Georgian Bay's current four ward system was the result of a thorough review, as I've articulated, as Counsel Cooper's articulated, led by, and I remember, is it Jay Williams? Doctor Williams, thank you, yes, Doctor Williams. Which emphasized the importance of fair representation, community involvement and balanced council size. The system was also affirmed, if memory serves me correctly, from what I read through the O M B at the time. Someone challenged this at the O M B, from what I recall reading. That's right, and it actually, the new structure stood, so it was challenged. And the new structure was, was validated by the O M B. And I think if memory serves me correctly, the O M B also suggested a review process and called for regular reviews to ensure effective representation. And I think by reducing the size of council and centralizing powers, it contradicts the recommendation, the objections of this process. So for all those reasons, I would argue otherwise. There was a couple of comments with regards to trying to stimulate active participation in politics. I'm not sure if anyone behind here has heard Jordan Peterson's comments on that. But if I paraphrase him, essentially, Doctor Peterson had said that smart people want to achieve things. And that's why they don't get into politics. And then lastly, I feel that, and I feel. Doctor Peterson said this, you guys can, you can confirm that, and I was quoting him. But at the same time, with regards to staff report, I'm concerned that with the lack of time that staff already has, adding this to their pile is just adding this more to their pile. So perhaps it's prudent that we have this discussion and all agree that maybe now's not the time. But we can always revisit this conversation if we ever so should need to, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fredko.
Thank you, and through your worship, so you know, this conversation, I'm hoping is about effectiveness of council and, and attracting new people to, to continue to want to be on council. And I think even suggestions such as, you know, evening meetings that are hybrid might be something that would help diversify the, the council chamber. And you know, as we look around this council chamber, we are all, you know, of a fairly similar demographic. So whatever we can do to, to bring different types of faces to this table, I think, you know, is a, is a valid approach. So if it's, if, if the consensus is that money ain't going to do it, there must be something that can help make, being a part of this fun-loving group of people more attractive to a broader, broader range of people. Maybe it's just they don't know how much fun we have. I do, you know, I also think that high number of acclamations is, is due to apathy on the, the part of, of the population and, and not really being engaged in municipal politics. I think we're all trying to get our communities engaged, and I hope that stimulates interest in, in council. But I think if you have an election with debates between candidates, you, you learn more about the, the issues of the day and whether or not somebody is more aligned with your interests and, and, and concerns. And the outcome of council would be more reflective of what people wanted rather than who, who put their hand up and was the only one to put their hand up. And, and some days I feel like that's my, my role on council, I wasn't acclaimed and I'm a new counselor. And I do try to make sure that I'm, I'm listening and responding to needs of the community. But I don't know that people who I talk to ever feel like they voted for me. So I, I really do think that we need to have more challenged wards in the next election. And whatever we can do to accomplish that is really important. In, in terms of the size of council, again, that's up for discussion. In those stats that I provided in terms of municipal size, we are the third smallest council of seven people in the province of ninety-two or ninety-seven councils. So from that, we're the third smallest population of all of the councils with seven that, that are currently on the list. It's based on permanent, but you know, all the other small municipalities also have a high seasonal population. And I went, I couldn't find any numbers on the number of seasonal residents because nobody, as we know, has a standard method of counting those people. So I would have liked to have a better comparison, but you know, that's really where we are. So it's just a consideration that is, if we look at the councils of five, we are population-wise, much more aligned with that, that grouping than we are of the sevens. And that's one of the considerations that I think we need to kind of keep in mind is to, we do have different communities of interest, but are they that dissimilar? That it justifies two extra positions within council? I think we would still maintain diversity of thought. I, I don't think I've ever seen this council engage in groupthink. With a council of five, I, I think we would still be having such diverse representations that I think that's a lower risk. And then in terms of workload, I think we would be looking at a workload that was more similar to a district counselor than a ward counselor. And that's something that perhaps the district counselors can provide feedback on. But in, in essence, I think I would, I would, you know, welcome knowing where we have erred in, in our facts. So if, if there is a staff report that isn't an onerous one to, to write, I would appreciate hearing back. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bocheck.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor, just one comment here. Actually, my phone buzzed and it said, boy, somebody sure took a shot at you three. And what that would be is, you know, there was mention of, of district counselors not having any say at district, that we're only three out of twenty-two. I highly, well, I'm not even going to get into it. But for an example, our mayor put force a resolution at council to fund the Georgian Bay General Hospital in Midland for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per year. And through the work of the three counselors, we were able to get a consensus at district that this was a good thing to do. So I do take offense to saying that we don't get anything done up there because we're only three of twenty-two. We actually do get quite a bit done up there. And hopefully, the next district counselors do the same thing. So just a comment off my cuff, thank you.
Counsel Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to sort of go backwards with my comments, they're all very short. Just in fairness, I, I hope nobody is, is suggesting that we're not doing our job up at the district. I think we're trying to, Counsel Bocheck. And, and I guess what I would say is that, you know, while we have some influence at the district, I think one of the things that we can point to is that there's a huge amount of money being spent in the district that applies to things like hospitals and wonderful things to happen and airports, et cetera. But most of our community cannot access, access those things. So it's, I think that's more to the point than us not doing our work. I don't take, I'm, I'm not hearing that from other people very much at all. But I just wanted to make that comment. The other thing, the other comments I've heard, things like, you know, it's hard to do some of this work if, if, if you've got a day job. And I just point out that if you look at the district counselors, almost all of our counselors at the district don't have a day job currently. That's pretty much the case, there may be a couple, but I don't know what you think, Mayor. But when I mean by a day job, a full-time, regular job with some employer, so to speak. So I don't know that that's really going to change. The, the, the district in its wisdom had their council meetings at night initially. And they changed that under Chair Clink because one counselor suggested that maybe in the afternoon would be a little bit easier for counselors to get there. And Chair Clink said, you know, almost everybody is doing just this or maybe a bit of real estate or something. But generally, the one o'clock in the afternoon time was much more amenable. And when he put that into place, I think maybe it was three o'clock initially, and then it got moved to one o'clock. So the long and short was that that went down reasonably well, I think, at the time. So I don't know that we're going to find people, that many people that are willing to do work other than, regular work, other than Counsel Graziano here. You're, you're probably the exception rather than the rule. And, and I, just a few other things in terms of.
I'm going to cut you off in two minutes, just so you know.
Okay, that's fine, they're all, they're just little comments. I, I wanted to point out that in terms of population, right now, we are represented by seven counselors and six of whom are more or less seasonal residents. And one who is a permanent resident, and that's pretty close to the mix. If you do the percentages, it's pretty close to the mix of our population, seasonal to permanent. And so I just think it's sort of interesting that it's turned out that way. I would also point out that there is, I think, I know, I'm not going to add that one. I'll leave that out for now. But I'd, I'd also be more than willing to have a discussion with our clerk. If there's any thing that I've said that is a misstatement, I'd be more than willing to have a discussion and also prove my alternate facts that are being suggested. Thank you.
I'm, I'm just going to make one comment, and then I want to shut this meeting down and start planning council before four thirty. Otherwise, our clerk will have too many alternate facts to deal with. The one, and the one comment I'm going to make, we, we have at, at District Council, a number of younger council members at this time. And I know that they have part-time jobs so that they, in their lives, can balance being a district counselor, a local counselor and a part-timer. And the combination makes a, a salary for them. So I think that's just, just for people's awareness, that's what has happened at District Council. With that, I'm not, I'm not going to propose any motion at this point. If, and, and we'll leave our clerk to decide whether she takes from our comments any direction. But I think I'm just going to shut this meeting down for now, I think the conversation may continue.
Sorry, if council wants us to come back, then something needs to be passed. Or I have nothing other than another member bringing.
Okay, so I could just simply say, moved by Counsel Fredko, seconded by Counsel Bocheck, that the discussions around the implementing changes to the composition of council continue?
Your worship, if I may.
You may.
I'd like to request a deferral then, just let's defer this for a later point.
Does that work as well for you?
If a referral forces it to come back next month, so you want a referral.
Okay, moved by Counsel Fredto, seconded by Counsel Bocheck. Be it resolved, staff review the options discussed at the committee as a whole and prepare a report to council on implementing the recommended change of composition of council. All those in favor of a referral?
A question in the wording? If you could repeat that, you said come back to council, I would like to come back to Cal.
Sorry.
For, for more discussion, okay.
No, it's being, the motion is on the table is to be referred, so it doesn't really matter what the motion is, it'll come back as is.
Right, I just thought it was said that it would come back to council.
Yeah, it did.
It does.
But we corrected that.
Because it's a referral, it'll.
But staff doesn't have to endeavor to do a report, is that correct? Okay, good.
Okay, then we really often discuss the committee of the whole, and I'll say come back to Cal. Refer, okay. Okay, all right. Move by, we're, we're going to get this done. Moved by Counsel Fredto, seconded by Counsel Bocheck. Be it resolved, staff review the options discussed at the committee of the whole and prepare a report for Cal on implementing the recommended changes to the composition of council. All those in favor of referral? And that is carried, thank you. And where is the last one? Be it resolved, the committee of the whole does now adjourn at four twenty-six P M. Moved by Counsel Hazelton, seconded by Counsel Jarvis, to reconvene May seventh, twenty twenty-five at nine A M. All those in favor? And that is carried. So now do we have to say something that are just reconvene, we have to exchange links? All right.